Good afternoon. I'd like to call the April 15, 2015 San Mateo County Harbor Commission Special Meeting to Order. And I've been asked by our council to start the meeting with closed session, so I'm reordering the agenda. And I apologize to the members of the public who put in speaker slips that I've been asked to go straight to closed session. When we come out, we will then resume to open session and then go back to closed session. Is that...
The request was that for the interest of efficiencies, that we do item number two in closed session first.
Okay.
And then come back out to conduct the open session for that is now listed as item one before the rest of the closed session. I didn't know that there were people waiting to speak, so I did not intend to inconvenience people. But the issue is just we have a highly priced council waiting for the closed session.
Big ticket, big ticket item here. Okay.
We have to have roll call.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, too.
If we could have roll call, please, that'd be great.
Commissioner Bernardo.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Matusch.
Here.
Commissioner Paravano.
Here.
President Brennan.
Here. So, we're going to go to Section D, Closed Session, Item Two, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, California Government Code, Section 54956.9D2 and D42 Cases. And I've been asked by the public to voice the concern that Commissioner Paravano should recuse himself for the closed session item related to the hoist on Johnson Pier. So I wanted to pass on that concern from the public regarding recusal. Thanks.
Could you please explain that?
It was suggested that because you operate a business as a fish buyer, that you should recuse yourself from closed session regarding the fish buying hoist. So we'll adjourn to closed session unless there's any... One that doesn't want to? Okay, so unanimously, we're going to adjourn to closed session. And in open session. And again, this is the April 15, 2015 San Mateo County Harbor Commission Special Meeting. So, do we need to do roll call again? All right. So I'd like to announce that in closed session, the board directed counsel to engage an independent auditor to conduct a forensic audit into the provision of IT services and equipment. The board agrees that the district needs assistance resolving this matter immediately. And now we're going to go to Item One, which is Open Session Award Contract to the Industrial Employers and Distributors Association, IEDA, for consultant support services related to labor negotiations.
Excuse me, before that, I think I did a comment.
I'm not quite finished reading it, just one second. A, authorize the acting general manager to enter into a contract with IEDA in a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000 in a form to be approved by legal counsel. And B, identify Ostrus Rungus as labor negotiator. And there's an attachment to the board packet, which is a draft agreement. And we have two public comments on this item, so I'd like to call public comment before we have... Well, I guess we could have board comment. Commissioner Paravano, you had something?
I was just going to point out that we skipped public comment on Item B.
On what item?
Item B.
Oh. Well, if anybody has public comment, do it now. Not on Item One. Hearing none, we're going to go back to One. And is there any other questions before we go to public comment on One? Okay. So I'm going to call Gary Stern.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here in my capacity of shop steward representing the members of the bargaining unit at San Mateo County Harbor District. They've asked me to voice their questions and concerns in regards to the award... Pardon me. In regards to awarding a contract to IEDA. It is their opinion that the process used to select IEDA has not been as transparent as could be, especially considering the current financial status of the Harbor District. I've been with the San Mateo County Harbor District for the past 12 years, and over that time, I've taken part in two MOU negotiations. Not once has the external consultant been hired as a labor negotiator. Those negotiations were led by the general manager and an HR representative, a position that is currently vacant momentarily justifying the need for an external consultant like IEDA. The $20,000 currently being discussed for such services is a sum of money that can do a great deal of good to the members of the public we serve. And as the MOU negotiation process could be delayed until a new HR representative is hired, it's an expense that could be completely avoided. As such, if you are insisting on spending these funds at this moment, we'd like to encourage the board to be transparent about the process taken to select IEDA for awarding such expenditures. Section One, Paragraph Two of our current MOU dictates the general manager initiate and lead this process. We'd like to know why it is being... We would like to know why is this process being initiated now when the current staff requires the need of such an outside consultant? Chapter 2.35 of the San Mateo County Harbor District Code dictates that the drafting and distribution of a request for proposal for such a large expense be dealt. Was that completed and is that available for review? And due to this being such a large expense for the Harbor District, that is an extremely precarious financial situation, we're competitive bidding or similar procedures used to ensure competitive pricing performed. My coworkers are concerned that the best practice has not been followed, or at least not in a way transparent to them and the members of the public. We ask you to consider this before awarding a contract to IEDA, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And the next public speaker is David Doyle.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. I'm the shop steward for the members of my bargaining unit for the San Mateo County Harbor District, and I'm here today representing them to express our concerns with this item on the agenda. First of all, as Gary mentioned, it's mentioned in Section 1.2 of our MOU that the GM or someone he designates has the authority to negotiate our contract. So our first question is, why is this item being presented by a commissioner instead of being coming from the general manager who has the authority to award a contract? Second thing is, we have... Why is a specific representative of IEDA being selected and awarded this contract? There are several other representatives from IEDA that will be able to perform the negotiations. So why are we limiting ourselves to one specific person when we should go out for contract and then IEDA should be sending us different options for who we can select to get these negotiations done? We're wondering if he's already had contact with either a member of the board or management about our negotiations before the contract has been awarded. And if so, we're worried about the transparency of the selection process. Last and most importantly, we had an item before the board to approve contractual services for $20,000, and in the contract it says per year. In the past, the general manager and the HR manager have taken on the responsibilities of negotiating our contract, and we've not seeked an outside negotiator in the recent past, as Gary Stern mentioned earlier. The district could save money from this contract if they delayed negotiations until a replacement for the HR representative was found. If the board does decide that they need to seek an outside negotiator, it should go out to proposal since the amount exceeds the spending threshold of $15,000 for contractual services for District Policy 4.3.1 as amended by Resolution 20-12 on December 5 of 2012. We should go to RFP to make sure that the district is getting competitive bids for these services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion, or is there any board discussion, questions?
I have a question. Can you explain to us how the selection was made since these questions came up?
Well, is that a question for council? Whoever brought this forward is... I mean, they're...
You're all looking at me. I've had zero to do with bringing this forward or selecting the consultants. I'm not the person to answer your question.
So, but you wanted this to be a contract, award of contract. You suggested that.
I suggested, I believe, that if you were to engage someone, it should be pursuant to a contract, and I encourage that I'd be allowed to review that contract.
Okay. So that's why it's on the agenda?
Yeah, but how was the selection made to choose this consultant for a contract?
I think when we didn't have an HR person, we heard that contract negotiations were coming up, not knowing where to turn, we consulted people of other special districts and said, "Who do you use?" And Montero Water and Sanitary says, "Well, we use IEDA." And they indicated they manage the trusts for both of the unions. They had a lot of experience in this area. And I didn't know the expediency or the importance of who was doing the negotiating. We have no HR manager, and we had an interim GM. And this just seemed like a way to bring this through in a timely manner.
And, well, how much time would we have to push this out to maybe go out for bid or hire another HR person? What is the time limit we have for the negotiations?
I think one question that... If I could ask a question that I think is kind of related to that, too. It's my understanding that if the contract was awarded, it's a not-to-exceed amount, so it doesn't specify that we have to spend up to $20,000. It doesn't specify that we have to spend one cent. Is that correct? Because it says not to exceed.
Well, I'll defer to Scott. I've not been involved in any negotiations. I took a quick look at this enough to identify to Scott that I did not think this contract was sufficient, and asked to whether there could be negotiations with a consultant on additional or different contract terms. And I think there's... That conversation may be ongoing. I'll let Scott answer that. But the answer to your question is, when I read this, what I read is that it's $20,000 a year as a fixed amount, not as a not-to-exceed. But that is one of the questions.
But I'm just reading the agenda. The agenda doesn't correlate to the agreement. It just says not to exceed. It's not in a... In other words, by voting for this award of contract, we're not actually voting for this agreement, are we?
It's up to you.
So we could be voting for an award not to exceed but not agreeing to this agreement?
It's up to you.
Yeah. So that's an option, correct?
Sure.
Okay. So what we would then be doing is we could change the not-to-exceed amount to a lower amount. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And as far as the timing goes, it's my understanding that the district got a letter from... I know really almost nothing about how unions operate, so you guys have to forgive me for not knowing the details because I will get it wrong. But I know Commissioner Bernardo could probably help me here because I've never been in a union. But I seem to recall that we got a letter saying that the district owed the unions money for the past several years and that we needed to pay it retroactively.
That doesn't have to deal with the negotiations. We received a letter from both union bargaining groups requesting to start negotiations.
In addition to that, so that letter is sort of a...
That was something that came up last year.
And we haven't paid the retroactive money, so we haven't resolved that issue.
No.
Okay. And then as far as the deadline, the union negotiations are supposed to be happening right now, right?
Could be happening right now, and if they do not happen in, for lack of a better word, to say, a timely fashion, and were delayed for a month or two past the end of the contract, is my understanding is that then it would continue... The contracts continue as-is till such time that it's resolved or negotiated.
Uh-huh. But there's no penalty or any other expense that we incur from not...
Not at this time, no.
Do you want to put in a speaker slip? I'm just trying to do this properly. I'll be happy to. So at this point, it doesn't seem like we have any plan to hire an HR manager. So, I mean, how do you envision this getting resolved? Because the district might decide that they don't want to fill that position going forward.
I'm looking at, as I spoke to the board at the last meeting and times before individually, is that I'm looking at getting some temporary hires, in which one would fill some temporary roles in the HR field. But I have not done that yet, a temporary hire.
Wouldn't you want the board to give you direction to fill that position? Because it seems like outsourcing HR... I know that's been suggested to me.
No, we're talking a temporary hire, employment hire. We talked about temporary hires in the past, that that's the general manager's discretion to hire temporary hires, not permanent hires.
Uh-huh. Okay. So I'm going to call John Draper. Thank you, John.
Thank you. You know, I've been with the district for over 30 years, and 20 of those years I was a shop steward for operating engineers at a pillar point. We've been without contract roughly two years before. So Scott's right, we just fall back on our old contract until a new one comes up. So, you know, to spend the $20,000 now, it just doesn't make sense to us, so just wanted to let you guys know.
Okay. I guess what comes up for me, and I could definitely use more input on this, is if we hired a part-time HR person so that we could deal with this, it would likely well exceed $20,000, especially when you consider all that we have to go with that. So I'm not saying that I'm necessarily in support of spending $20,000, but it seems to me that it could actually end up saving the district money in the long run.
Well, do we know also from Mr. Rungus, one of our documents says $20,000, the other says not to exceed. Do we have a better estimate of what it would cost to go through this process? Do you want me to answer that?
I guess that's a question.
Yeah. The document that was shared with the general manager is an annual contract, and that annual contract does have a clause that the district can terminate before the year's up, so it would be... Could be less than $20,000. Correct.
While you're standing there, could you help us understand if there are any, you know, urgency issues? Because I'm trying to understand, like, the timing and, you know, as we've got the budget in front of us right now, obviously, the district has a lot of budget concerns. We're running a $3.5 million deficit, and we've been running a deficit for a number of years. So costs, labor costs are certainly a concern, benefit costs are certainly a concern. All of those things need to be thought out, and the board needs probably a lot more information to make informed decisions. Do you have any input?
Yeah, let me try to see if I can conceptualize some of the things that are in play. Number one, under Myers-Millias-Brown Act, which is the law that governs public sector negotiations in California, every public sector employer has an obligation to meet and confer with both, in your case, both bargaining units prior to the adoption of the next fiscal year budget, especially since these both labor contracts are coming to an end on June 30. The gentleman here that commented is correct that the current labor agreement terms will continue until one of two things transpires, a new labor contract is negotiated, or after going through the process that's in the law, the commission takes unilateral action. Now, you do also have, and I do not know if the letters have been received, but if you... If I heard correctly, is you might have received what's called reopeners letters from both of the unions, both Local 3 as well as A56. If those letters have been received, then I think that you do have an obligation under the law to expeditiously meet and confer with them as requested.
Have we received those letters?
I just stated that, yes.
Okay.
So in that case, you do have a priority of having... Starting this process. June 30 is very close. It's two and a half weeks, two and a half months away.
Okay. You got a question?
Sure. I wanted to just chime in a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Rungus. A couple of things. I am a member of a union. I'm IFPTE Technical Engineers at the Port of Oakland. And we have four unions, and they all have varying contract time... Sort of the timing for their contracts end at different times. And our three-year contract is just about up. So we're beginning this sort of meet and confer process ourselves. And typically, the way it works, from what I've seen and also where I work, is at the port, under our HR director, we have a specific labor specialist, and that's what they do full... I mean, full-time, they work with a negotiator to handle all of these meet and confers and just making sure that the process... That all of the deadlines are met, okay? Now, I understand that because, you know, we don't have an HR director right now, and we're kind of in a state of flux in terms of staff, it doesn't have to be an HR director. I mean, it could be someone on staff. It could be a general manager. It could be a harbor master. It could be someone empowered by the district to act as the labor specialist to work with a negotiator on the meet and confers. So it doesn't have to be, you know, an HR director. I don't want us sort of being locked into that role in our minds. And I would urge that this board take action on this, just so we can make sure that we make those deadlines and that with all due respect to Mr. Draper, I wouldn't like to see contracts be out two years, you know, and things like that. And while all districts are different, you know, some really depend upon contracts being signed, like, on time. We've seen up and down the West Coast what could happen when labor contracts aren't signed on time. Gridlock can happen. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen here, but I would just urge the board to move on this expeditiously, and let's not get hung up on the who and what and, you know, who's going to handle it. Empower someone on staff or someone who can just sort of shepherd this process and make sure that we meet those deadlines, and our responsibilities to all of the members of the unions at the district.
So I have a lot to learn in this area, and I would like to... I'd like to move forward, but I need some direction from council on what's possible. Can I amend? See, we don't have a... I don't know why I was listed as the report, because we don't have a report. I certainly didn't prepare a report other than, you know, what's listed on this item here. Can we... Could we award a amount of, say, I'm just throwing out a number, $5,000, not-to-exceed $5,000 so that we can identify Ostrus Rungus as a labor negotiator so that we can learn more about the process? Is that doable?
You know, it takes two to tango, so...
Is that... But I mean, I'm just questioning... I don't even know what I'm doing here, so is that sound...
Well, I'm trying to answer your question. I don't know whether IEDA is interested in a contract of the sort you're describing, so you can't award a contract unless there's an agreement to do so. So I don't know the answer to whether there is ability to hire IEDA on a more limited basis.
Well, could we meet and ask them, then? Could we, like, do just not-to-exceed, and then if we need to bring it back, we could bring it back?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Well, there were concerns about going over the $15,000 spending limit.
Well, I can address that. The board's policies are clear that over a dollar threshold, an RFP should be conducted and procurement procedures call for a competitive process.
Over a $1, you said?
No, I believe it's $15,000.
Okay.
However, there is also a clear statement in a number of places in your administrative code that says the board can waive all the requirements for competitive procurement if it finds that doing so is in the district's best interest. So in order to award this contract, you would need to say that we're awarding a contract and that we find the district's best interests are served by awarding it without competition. And your code expressly allows for such action.
And so could we award the contract for a lesser amount and then increase it later if we thought we needed to?
Sure. Same answer as before, which is that you need two parties to a contract. So if you awarded a contract for $1, I would imagine that IEDA would say, "Thank you, but no thank you." So I don't know whether there's an agreement between the parties as to a dollar amount of a contract.
But what you're basically saying is it doesn't matter if we award it for $15,000 or $20,000, the board could decide to do that without going out for RFP.
Correct. If your concern is the competitive procurement process, the board can find that awarding the contract without competition is in the district's best interest. I would suggest that you give a reason for doing that. Sounds like the reason is that you need to commence negotiations soon because the end of the fiscal year, and there's not proper time for a thorough RFP process that would otherwise be called for.
The timing is the concern. So if the district then wanted to go out for RFP for a different contract later, they would certainly be able to do that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions?
I have one more question.
Okay.
For Scott. So a lot of people pointed out that the labor negotiations for the district or in general are made by the general manager and then HR person. You pointed out that you're in the process of looking at these for temporary HR. How do you feel, I mean, with everything else you have going on, are you ready to run with it? Or would you actually welcome the idea of a contractor to come in and help with that?
It's kind of a two-way street. You know, if I have to run with the ball, I run with the ball. I think that... I think it's really important to be consistent in whatever we do. So that, you know, and, you know, the district is, you know, actively looking for an acting general manager as well. So I, you know, might be back in my harbor master role in a month or two. And so the consistency is also a concern. And I'm also looking at, you know, from my point of view, that I could... And I'm also looking at, you know, from my point of view, that I could be delegated, if that was the case, by the then-acting general managers to continue on, too. So it really depends on what, you know, goes on.
Sure. Thanks.
There's a lot of flux in a lot of different areas.
I would like to point out that even before we had an HR director, there were still labor negotiations that were extremely successful between the union and the Harbor District. So I would not put all of the concern on the fact that we do not have currently an HR manager onboard. I think what is very important to realize is that we have two unions that are asking us to initiate a discussion on their contracts. And behind these contracts are people's lives. There's, there are members of both unions that have been here for decades, and they have exemplified very high standards of work toward the district. And for me to sit here and think that, oh, because we don't have an HR director, that we cannot continue with this process unless we spend a large sum of money. It is in our best interest to make the workplace as extremely comfortable and extremely accommodating for every employee that we, that is in contract with the Harbor District. So I would ask that we do not continue on this awarding of this contract for this afternoon that's listed in our agenda, and that we let the acting harbor master, acting general manager proceed as this district has proceeded for decades on initiating and completing labor negotiations. And now we have two unions. Before, for a long time, we only had one union. So that has been a success. That's been a template for this district, and I see no reason to deviate from that process. And it is, I think it's, as commissioners, we are very extremely responsible to make sure that our employees are treated properly, with respect, and with a lot of, a lot of thanks for the work that they do.
Okay. And I just had a couple of last questions for Mr. Rungus, if you don't mind. Just, so I understand your services a little bit better. It's my understanding that the district currently purchases, I've noticed in our list of organizations that we do business with, that your organization or your company is one of those organizations or has been in the very near past, and that you guys provided labor survey information to our HR manager?
Correct.
And then, is it also the case that you worked for the district in the past?
Yes.
Could you...
Yes. Well, let me just go back a little bit. IEDA was formed in 1937. It was an employer association, and when South San Francisco was the industrial city, we used to represent a lot of the companies that basically were located in this area. Then the late '60s, when Myers-Millias-Brown came onboard, we also started doing public sector negotiations. I'd say roughly 30-some years ago, I did negotiate the first expanded MOU here at the district at the time. And so I'm very familiar with the contract itself. I looked at both A56s as well as Local 3's contract. And some of the basic language is the one that I negotiated, like I said, 30 years ago. By the way, I do appreciate the board indulging me, because I was a little late, since I was over at Operating Engineers Local 3 right now, negotiating a private sector contract with them. And I have quite a bit of familiarity with both Local A56 and Local 3. Those are two very well-established, very professional unions that know a lot about public sector negotiations as well as private sector negotiations. And as noted, I also have familiarity with both Health and Welfare Trusts. And just so that everybody's fully aware, I'm a trustee on both of the trusts, as well as chairman of the Operating Engineers Local 3 Trust for the Public Sector, just so that there is total transparency on this particular issue, because healthcare is issue number one these days. President, you asked about the survey services. Yes, it's my understanding that some years ago, the district did contract with IEDA to do salary survey. That's a subsection of the work that we do, and I assume those were either used for salary setting or for negotiations. I should also comment on Commissioner Bernardo's observation, because I did represent the Port of Oakland for about 10 years, so I'm very familiar with the port environment as well as Port Stockton, which I did as well. So, just so that there's no misunderstanding, in case somebody noticed him and I shaking hands, we knew each other in a different professional capacity.
Could you give us a little rundown on other agencies that you work with, so we have an idea of the, you know, your background?
Yeah, you know, some of the agencies that I work for have been mentioned. I do Sewer Authority of Midcoast Side. I do Montero, which, and then Colma and Brisbane are some of your closer people in this area as well. I've done work for South San Francisco. Currently, I'm doing the negotiations for the City of Vallejo. As you know, they have gone through a very tough spell in public administration, and they retained my services specifically three years ago to see if we could rearrange the dynamics. And so far, we've been pretty good moving forward. That's no promise that that will be continuing, but those are just a quick, you know, where I personally am involved. Then, of course, like I mentioned, I'm doing some private sector negotiations. The one that I'm engaged in right now is a significant operating engineers negotiations. It's for CELE. Those are all the inspectors on construction jobs in Northern California and Northern Nevada, both public and private sector inspection jobs. And that's a significant master contract negotiations. So just a, that's a quick review as to what I'm doing.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions, or would someone like to make a motion? Yeah.
I was, if I'm not mistaken, just point of order, Commissioner Peravano made a motion. Is that correct? Was that a motion?
He didn't make a motion.
No? I think that was a motion. I'm sorry.
No.
I did not.
Okay, sorry.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we deny this awarding of contract to the Industrial Employers and Distributors Association for consultant support services relative to labor negotiations.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. Now, can I call for a second motion? Because you can make a, according to Robert's rules, you can make a motion after the motion, correct?
It depends what your motion is. You can't make a competing motion, but you can make a motion to table this discussion, and if that vote was correct, if that vote passes, then you could consider a second motion.
That's confusing. What does that mean exactly?
You could make a motion to reject consideration. I have to look to make sure I've got the proper Robert's rules. You know my love of Robert's rules lingo. I was not prepared for a Robert's rules battle this afternoon. So I'm not sure what the official title has to be, but essentially, it would be a motion to object to the consideration of this motion. And if you get a second and that passes, then you could move on to a second motion.
Okay. I'm still learning the second motion thing.
Or postpone, there's a, you could postpone consideration of this, pending consideration of a secondary motion, an alternative motion. You could do that as well.
So you could make a motion to postpone the motion for, until consideration of a second motion, and then go back to the first motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Without voting on either, without voting on the first motion?
If you get a majority vote, not to vote on the first motion.
So I'd like to, I move that we postpone the motion until consideration on a second motion, and then we'll go back to the first motion. Can I get a second?
I'm so confused now. I'd second it just to find out what you're trying to say.
Okay. So I got a second. So now that means I get to make a motion, and then we...
Well, don't we have to take a roll call to see if that motion passes?
Well, we don't have the motion yet.
Well, her motion is to postpone...
This is a motion, let's cut through Robert's rules, because I'm happy to disclose on public television that Robert's rules are confusing even to the best of us. But you are now voting to deny the board the ability to consider the motion that Commissioner Peravano has made. You are not considering a substantive motion of any sort. You're voting, there's been a motion and a second, and now there's been another motion to reject, to deny the board the opportunity to vote on the motion that was seconded.
Oh, I thought what you said was that I was making a motion to be able to make, to pause that motion and make a motion for consideration.
No, you should first reject, if you, in order to consider a second motion, you should reject this motion and then have a second motion.
That's not how I've read Robert's rules. Are you sure about that?
I'm not sure about anything when it comes to Robert's rules.
Okay. All right. Well, let's keep it simple, then. So now we have two motions and two seconds.
The motion that is now before the board is a procedural subsidiary motion. It is a motion whether or not to consider the motion that's on the table from Commissioner Peravano, seconded by Commissioner Brenner. It is purely a motion of, a procedural motion to limit consideration of the motion that's on the table.
Okay. And so, roll call is in order.
Sure.
I would like to hear the wording again, because I don't know if we're considering the first motion or if we're...
You're voting on the second one.
This is a motion, this is a vote to kill the...
No, I get this. I just don't know whether it's a positive or negative, so...
Voting yes kills the existing motion on the table.
Okay.
Prevents consideration of it. Voting no means you're voting to deny the current motion, which will allow the underlying motion to go forward. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Does that clear to everybody what they mean by yes or no?
I think you should repeat that.
Okay. So if you vote yes on this subsidiary motion, you are, in effect, erasing the motion that is otherwise on the table. Vote yes erases the underlying motion. Vote no allows the underlying motion to be considered. Clear?
I forgot what the first motion was.
Deny award contract.
Okay. All right, so...
Any other?
No. Roll call?
Commissioner Bernardo?
No.
Commissioner David?
No.
Commissioner Matusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Peravano?
No.
President Brennan?
Yes. Okay. So now we have discussion about the motion, which, Peravano, could you please restate your motion?
There is a motion on the floor, and it was seconded by Commissioner Bernardo. I see no reason to restate my motion.
Is there any discussion about the motion?
I'm kind of torn between what Mr. Rungus said and Mr. Draper said, in that the contract can go on and on and on, and also, it's in our best interest to address the contract because we received a procedural letter. So that's what weighs heavy on me.
And any other, you had something?
Yeah, I just think that's not mutually exclusive. I think we still can move forward with the negotiations, just with our acting general manager leading the negotiations.
So, any other? Okay. So I would like to point out that our acting general manager has not, to my knowledge, done union negotiations in the past.
I've gone through operating engineers five to 10 times in contract in Seattle. I have done longshore negotiations three times.
Okay, well, thank you.
I've done the bargaining groups, trades bargaining groups as well.
Thank you for clarifying that, but not here at this district, correct?
No, not here at this district.
Okay. And then I also wanted to point out that our HR manager, who was paid in 2013, including all the benefits and everything, $200,000 a year, is obviously not with us now. We do have a deadline in front of us, and we have a general manager who has told us, or an acting general manager who has told us that he is completely overburdened and overwhelmed. And on top of everything else, we now have a forensic audit going on, and we have extensive PRA requests coming in for invoices and documents going back for a number of years. So I'm concerned about our staff's ability to work on this. I also am concerned about having staff who receives the identical benefits that our labor receives administering or overseeing our negotiations. I think that the district would benefit from having an outside or independent negotiator who is not receiving the identical benefits that our union employees are receiving, because I think it sets up a situation where it's not in that manager's best interest from a fiscal standpoint to negotiate anything different than what they might currently have. And I think that that's a flawed situation, and one of the main concerns related to that that stands out for me is the fact that we do have the Affordable Care Act in effect. And one of the things that I understand from reading through the Affordable Care Act is that in 2018, there will be new rules which require that if you're paying annual premiums over a certain dollar amount, I believe it's $27,500 in annual premiums, that in our case, the district would be required to pay an additional 40% excise tax, which is called the Cadillac Tax. And that's 40 cents on every dollar. And I, from looking through our current premiums, I haven't looked at operator engineers, so I don't know, but, and, but the premiums that I did look at, I believe the plan, and correct me if I'm wrong, is around $2,236 per month, so that's an annual premium of And if you do the math, by the time we reach 2018, it's starting to look like we well may be over the $27,500 tipping point, at which time, the district would then have to pay an extra 40% in excise tax for benefits. I hope that this is something that we could avoid. I think that we can't afford it, given the district's financial conditions. So for that reason, I think it's really imperative that we get somebody who's experienced and capable of helping guide the district towards avoiding those types of pitfalls. So that's my main concern right now. And I think to take a stance of do nothing is not in the district's best interest. I think we have a responsibility to address this, and I don't know, you know, I've never gone through a union negotiation, so I don't know the process, but I would like to, or let's just say, I support hiring a consultant who can help the district with it on a temporary basis until we get onto more solid ground, which, without a permanent general manager who isn't so extremely overburdened, I know we've heard... who isn't so extremely overburdened, I know we've heard from Scott that he's working 80 to 90 hours a week, I would hate to think that we would dump more on his lap. And I just want to remind the board about that, because I know that's been a big concern for the commissioners. So those are some of the concerns that are standing out for me, and that's why I'm going to vote no on the motion. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, roll call?
Is there a public?
Do you want to put in a speaker slip? And you know, at this point, I don't think we're going to take any more public comment because we've got a motion on the floor. I can't do that, right? We've got to finish the motion.
You can take public comment if you'd like.
I mean, in the middle of a motion, do you mind?
No, that's fine.
Okay. That'd be great. If it's something specific to the excise tax that I don't know, I would be interested in hearing that.
It's something specific to the motion that's on the floor. It has nothing to do with the excise tax. It has to do with hiring someone for negotiations, which you just said has nothing to do with the motion that's on the floor. That gentleman over there can do negotiations. If it becomes the board's vote that you guys want to go after our benefits, because that's what we're talking about here, then that's what you direct the general manager to do, whoever's negotiating the contract. It doesn't matter, we're just saying that as a group, we think that expenditure of $20,000 is too high to hire someone to do negotiations. Whoever you pick to do negotiations, they're going to follow your wishes. So that's not, doesn't even have a bearing on motion that you just said.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Great, roll call?
Commissioner Bernardo?
Aye.
Commissioner David?
Aye.
Commissioner Matusch?
Aye.
Commissioner Paravano?
Aye.
President Brennan?
No.
I didn't hear everybody's votes, I don't know.
Everybody was a yes except for Commissioner Brennan, who was no.
We'll be back in closed session.
Yeah, that's next. So I need to announce closed session. We have, we're going to go back into closed session, which is item D on the agenda, and we have, what do we have here? Conference with real property negotiator, California Government Code Section 54956.8, 504 Avenue Alhambra, El Granada. Scott Grindi and Randy Kinghorn are the negotiators, and negotiating parties are Working Dirt LLC, Abraham Farrag, and under negotiation, price in terms of payment, title, that's it, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're adjourning to closed session. So I'd like to call the San Mateo County Harbor District Harbor Commission Special Meeting, April 15th, 2015, 1:00 PM, back to order. And I'd like to announce that in closed session, the board authorized the president to sign a lease at 504 Avenue Alhambra, commencing June 1st, 2015. Occupancy for three years, base terms with three one-year options, at an initial monthly rent of $7,000 per month, and the vote was unanimous. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Does anybody, everybody agree we're adjourning?
Yes.
Right, unanimous, we're adjourned, and I'd like to start the San Mateo County Harbor District Board of Harbor Commissioners, 2015, 4 o'clock, special meeting. San Mateo County Harbor Commission, April 15th, 2015, 4:00 PM, special meeting to order. Can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Bernardo?
Here.
Commissioner David?
Here.
Commissioner Matusch?
There.
Commissioner Paravano?
Here.
President Brennan?
Here. And we have public comment, the public may speak for up to three minutes on items that are not on the agenda. I have one speaker slip for Leonard Warren.
Good afternoon, commissioners. One thing to say...
I can't hear you.
Well, maybe I have two things to say, okay? It was a horrible location for the meeting. Obviously, the acoustics of the room are bad. On top of that, it's just short of impossible for most people in the county to get here, and this is a ridiculous time when the most important thing that public officials do is safeguard the public's money, and that means the budget is the most important thing you do in the whole year, and to have this during the day when most people can't make it is just totally ridiculous and unacceptable.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have item one under new business, which is a proclamation for Gary Stern. And we have a copy of the proclamation in our board packet, and I would like to read it. This is a proclamation, San Mateo County Harbor District, to honor Gary Stern, proclaimed by the Board of Harbor Commissioners that whereas Gary Stern retired as deputy harbor master on April 30th, 2015, after 12 years of distinguished service to the San Mateo County Harbor District, and whereas Gary Stern began his harbor district career in February 2003 as a deputy harbor master at Oyster Point Marina, where he continues to demonstrate exemplary customer service skills and abilities while also serving the harbor district's needs till his retirement in 2015, and whereas Gary Stern was known by harbor tenants, visitors, and other agency personnel, business people, and district staff as an individual of integrity, competence, high energy, and commitment to excellence in his work ethic, and one who strove to treat others with courtesy and consideration, and whereas Gary Stern always sought to effect positive change by his leadership, his training of staff, and his interactions with the harbor commission, and his fellow staff and managers, and whereas Gary Stern has served the district, its governing board, and staff with dedication, distinction, and good humor. Now therefore be it known that the Board of Harbor Commissioners hereby honors Gary Stern for his service to the San Mateo County Harbor District. And I would like to personally thank Mr. Stern, there he is. Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Yeah.
Yes.
Through the chair, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank Gary Stern from the crew and myself. He is, if any of you have seen the show Mash, he's my Raydo O'Reilly. He's the guy that when you turn around because you forgot a screwdriver or something, you're down doing something, you turn like this and it's in your hand. He's that guy, he's the guy who dots all the i's, crosses all the t's for all of us. All the little things that go unnoticed, Gary's there to pick them up for us, and it's invaluable for us here. And me personally, it's going to be really hard for us to continue to run our facility at the level that we have without Gary, and I'd just like to thank you very much for your service.
I would like to add that I have known Mr. Stern ever since he was hired on here at the district, and from day one, he was a happy camper, and I just hope that you continue your life with the same amount of happiness and content, and I wish you just a lot of success and happiness to you and your family in the future. And thank you very much for your service to the San Mateo County Harbor District.
I'd also like to make a comment, that one of the things that I, you know, above all the other comments that have been made about Gary, one thing I've appreciated more than anything is his coordination of effort towards all our events. Gary has been the yeoman of every event, and it has been just so appreciated. You know, most recently, we had our Easter egg hunt, and I was almost surprised that Gary wasn't in the Easter bunny outfit, just the way things were going. So I really do appreciate everything Gary's done, and I will really miss you.
All right, next, we have item two, which is presentation, facilities...
Commissioner Bernardo? I'm sorry. Did you want to make a motion or perhaps vote on the proclamation?
Oh, yes, I always forget that part. We have to do that, I'm so sorry. So I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation as it's written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Bernardo?
Aye.
Commissioner David?
Aye.
Commissioner Matusch?
Aye.
Commissioner Paravano?
Aye.
President Brennan?
Aye, thanks. Okay, so now, are we good to go with this PowerPoint, or should we go to the IT item?
Number two, we're waiting for the PowerPoint to come back, it did not load properly, so...
Okay, so I'm going to go to item four.
We have item three on the, it's next on the agenda.
I'm going to go to item four because it's a short item while we're getting our PowerPoint together. So item four is approval of IT vendor for Harbor District move activities, and we have a memo from acting harbor master Scott Grindi regarding proposals, and the proposed action is approve, sorry, approve IT vendor for a not-to-exceed amount of $10,000. And with that, we'll go to General Manager Grindi.
Yes, as I'm, there it is, okay, sorry, lost my bookmark here. The, we went out at this last, after the last board meeting, and requested quotes for IT work, and as noted in the background of this memo, we also contacted, it looks like there are about four vendors, actually another fifth one today, as well as, there was a few that came in following the meeting with discussions of looking and possible proposals. From that, we received one proposal, actually, I'm sorry, two proposals, one earlier this last week, and then one from Network Strategy yesterday, I guess, that was received before the, or was on the first, at the board meeting. Anyway, the short version of it is, is that right now, we have Caspian IT Group as the lowest bidder of the group. I wish to say though, too, that what makes it very difficult in this is, you know, staff are not IT people, so it's very difficult to make the requirements very stringent. Also, that in recent board changes, where consultants could not be hired to write a consultant spec, you know, we do not have that authority anymore. So we made our best shot at it from notes we had, and that's how we obtained the quotation. This would be mainly for the move, but also for the items for the move, so that it maintains Oyster Point still in operation once the admin office is no longer there at the 400 Building, because that's where the antenna connects to this location. And I've asked for a contingency amount in this, the bid came in at 5950, with tax came to $6,545. I've asked for a $3,400 contingency, mainly because there's always something we didn't know. One of the things that I was concerned with, the lowest bidder, as well as the other bidder, no one mentioned about equipment movement, phone movement, and those are two critical points that I have to resolve yet with both, or the lowest bidder. So I need to have some of that.
Just for a point of clarification, you mentioned that you did put together a request for the vendors?
Yes.
And I just wanted to mention for the public's information, that if you dig through the item four packet info, you'll see that there's a letter dated April 3rd, 2015, that is to vendors from Scott Grindi, which is specking out things that he was hoping to see in various, you know, proposals. So there is a formal request from our acting general manager included in the board packet, if anybody's curious to read that. And then, of course, there's also a couple of proposals. So we have some public comment, so I'm going to go to that.
I have one quick question.
Yeah.
Is there a copy of the second proposal, too?
It's in the packet. It might be one of the last pages, very back page.
Oh, it's just one, the one page?
Yeah, it was just a one page.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay, so first, I'm going to call Brian Rogers.
Yeah, my name's Brian Rogers, I've spoken here before. On this issue, I'm a little concerned because from what it looks like, one of these came in before we even sent out the spec. And I'm curious how a vendor had any idea that we were looking for a spec before the board even put it out. And what I'm led to believe is that one commissioner was given special tours of the theoretical new space that we don't even have a lease for yet, to both these vendors, in fact, got one of these private tours from a commissioner. Why is the commissioner dealing with a vendor directly anyways? Why aren't they dealing with the general manager? And how is it that a vendor knows we need a proposal before the board or the district has even asked for one? This to me kind of looks like some backroom deals that are being made, and somebody's really going out of room here to get their friend's another contract. This kind of leads to, back to the one that, you know, we already have, commissioner's friend on contract to do work. How many more friends are we going to get contracts for? Thanks.
And I'd just like to clarify for Mr. Rogers that the proposal...
Again, you don't get to speak back to the public.
I can clarify, yes, I can, it's allowed. The proposal that you mentioned was submitted to the board at the last Harbor District meeting. It's dated 3/31/2015, and it was provided to the board at the April 1st board meeting. So as far as...
Prior to the board ever asking you?
Please don't shout during the meeting, thank you.
A commissioner requested a proposal by himself.
At the point, I never received a copy of that night.
You did receive a copy of it because I handed it to you, and they were handed out by a member of the public, and you received other estimates as well, so, which were not included. And acting general manager Grindi asked for this proposal. I believe that he had your copy of it, but apparently...
No, I didn't have any copies of anything, so I basically, when you mentioned that there was copies I asked for, could you send me that?
Well, it's the same proposal that was presented to me, to Commissioner Paravano, and to Commissioner David the night of the meeting. We have another public comment, which is Leonard Warren.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I only had time to flip through this really quickly, but the one thing that I did pick up from this is you're potentially violating a 35-year-old rule of mine, which has never changed more than one thing at the same time unless you absolutely have to. And what I think that the approach you need to take here is arrange to have handled, you know, probably by, is there only one proposal here? But in any case, you know, one or two, however many proposals are in here, have one of these respondents take care of immediately only the things that have to be done to support the move, and like, you know, reconfiguring the email and using the exchange server and all that stuff. It's not clear to me that that has to be done as part of the move, and if it doesn't, that's... And if it doesn't, that's just extra complexity for both the IT guy doing it and for the staff that have to use it. And anything that you can defer until after the move is finished, I strongly recommend that you defer it until after the staff has settled into the new office and not try and bundle all these changes together. That's just asking for trouble.
Okay.
And the price looks somewhat reasonable to me.
Next, we have John Ollm.
I learned something today from you. Was Caspian that preferred vendor? Defended somebody?
I believe, yeah.
But Caspian's defended somebody?
I believe both of them are.
And staff picked them out?
No. No, they were unsolicited by staff.
Caspian was unsolicited by staff? And so you picked an unsolicited bid? That's good, though, isn't it? Because it's the lowest bid.
It's the only one received other than the other one I got last night.
So if, you mean there were not? So there wouldn't be no bids to talk about if somebody hadn't let it be known that we had a problem. Now, I don't know if you guys read blogs. I know most people don't. But this discussion about the fact that the previous vendor was less than, I don't know, fair or whatever, it's been going on for a long time. It's been going on since, for some reason, a commissioner asked a few questions. Much the same as a commissioner once asked a few questions of the Mosquito District. See, back in the days when the Mosquito District was around, they wasted millions of dollars. Nobody had a clue. Nobody knew what was happening. Staff didn't catch it. Chris didn't catch it. Wasn't anybody like us that caught it. It was caught by a board member. A board member asked one question. Boom, millions of dollars was found to be stolen. Now, here's where we're at on your IT department and what we, you know, the reliability of your staff and your consultants and your management and everybody, is there was $35,000 of equipment that has not been delivered. And nobody seems to be too upset about this. DA don't care. I don't suppose that you guys have started an investigation about it. We don't know if the vendor ripped it off, or staff took it, or if a board member took it, or management took it. Don't know. It's not there. What else is not there? This was not an investigation, this bit about these computers. None of us were looking for theft. It was stumbled upon. And the only reason it was stumbled upon is because of the outrageous $21,000 quote for firewalls, which you all would have paid if somebody hadn't asked him questions. I understand that staff doesn't have the expertise to evaluate this kind of stuff. Why should you? It's, you know, real basic to a guy like me, but I bet you this stuff is basic to this guy, that I wouldn't have a clue how to evaluate. And there's probably stuff that's basic to you that I would not have a clue how to evaluate. I understand that. But you are in a unique position. People want to comment on this stuff. People are actually willing to go through these quotes and read them. People are actually willing to look at your books and see that you've paid double invoices, that you've got equipment that you haven't been delivered. You need to start listening to maybe some more sources. You crowdsource some of this stuff because you do not have the expertise and can't be expected to have that expertise. So maybe if you had gathered these bids up, do it again if you have to. You know, since we're this late in the game, maybe you got time? Let's put them off there where we can evaluate them. I don't know what else to say. Guys seem to be really lost and not focused on the facts. You're missing all this equipment. Later on today, you're going to find out you got $3 million, you got a stick you're going to have to take out of reserves to pay for capital projects.
Thank you.
That can't last.
And I'd like to make a point of clarification for people that were not here earlier in the meeting, or in the, one of the earlier special meetings. The board announced out of closed session that the board has directed District Council to engage an independent auditor to conduct a forensic audit into the provision of IT services and equipment. The board agrees that the district needs assistance resolving this matter immediately.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to clear that up. All right. So that's it. Oh, we have one more. Deborah Galarza.
Just on this item, I just wanted to bring up that during the time that Scott was out and I was Acting General Manager, I had a meeting in the district office with Tom Matusch and Sabrina there. At that time, we talked about different items that were coming up. One was the potential move. And we talked about just kind of what we might have to put in place to make that happen. At that time, I said, well, gosh, for the IT, I said, I don't even know if we'd have time for an RFP. I don't really know. And so nothing was ever really said. You know, I got a phone call and worked over the weekend to have the IT person meet at the new potential site. I just want to say, if at the time of the meeting when I said, I'm not sure if we need an RFP, if I was told, no, we want to get bids on this item, I would have had seven people show up to the site and be competitive bidding. So it just kind of went along, went along, and then, you know, we talked about putting the item on the board meeting for April 1. And maybe two days before, I got an email saying, shouldn't we get more bids? So there wasn't a lot of time to really, you know, do what was needed because that wasn't the direction being given. So, you know, I think there needs to just be a little more communication and clarity about what, what needs to be done, you know, changing your mind in the last minute and then, you know, kind of, doesn't really work. I mean, everyone's trying to do the right thing.
Thank you. Okay. So Scott, do you have anything else you want to say about this, other than your report?
No, I'm just waiting on the board.
Do we have any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I have something.
Okay.
So when I looked at the proposals, one thing that jumped out at me was also on the staff report. It said unsolicited firms, and it lists Caspian IT Group. While in their introductory letter, it says this proposal is being prepared in response to a request for quote. And so I'm concerned about this, too, because I think we cannot guarantee that we minimize opportunities for favoritism as we are obligated to. And we cannot guarantee that we provide for competitive pricing the way we're obligated to. And so I'm, I'm willing to vote today on one of the proposals because I do not want to add any more stress to staff and help with the move. I totally agree that we should limit the items on the proposal to the ones that are absolutely necessary for the move. And then encourage, I would like to encourage a competitive bid for future IT needs and services. And we're very lucky here in San Mateo County that we have a great community of cities and districts in this county. And I've made a couple of phone calls and actually put Scott in contact with the city manager that is willing to help out the district with immediate IT needs on a temporary basis, so the Harbor District can keep functioning at this time where we don't have IT support. And so I think that will buy us some time to go out for bid and find someone through this competitive bidding process that we can use for future IT needs.
If I may comment, also, thank you also for sending, or providing me some of the contact there. I also talked to South Cities, South San Francisco's IT Department, just to find out. They provide services to other cities, but as they refer to it, their bandwidth is too full right now to take on others. But I think that the intent is there is other cities and government agencies around who would love to have a subcontract to help out someone like us, so that they are able to, you know, fulfill our needs, because we're very small that way, but also fulfill their own needs. Additionally, one of the things you'll see is that, like, you'll notice on the top of the firm solicited, there's a state contract under the state of California where they've already gone out for their RFP. It has, I think, about 100-plus names, but it's the whole state. And so when we go out for our RFP for services, one of the things we will do is notify all of them as well. The problem is when I contacted, like, Dell Marketing, they're really happy to put a price to this, but they said they don't have time right now. This was pretty much a small project that they're not geared up for locally. They would have been happy to do it if they were providing services, though. And that was kind of the same comment I got out of a few of the other state contract firms and regular firms. They're happy to put something together, but they're really interested in our long-term planning with whoever they, you know, if they have an opportunity there. So.
Yes.
I just would like to say something about this item. I am not by any means an IT expert, and I'm not going to claim to be. In fact, where I work, if I have a problem with my computer, I call our IT help desk or I call our Chief Technology Officer directly, our director, and I say, I need help with this. I can't quite do this. So I, so this kind of stuff, I don't really understand, and I heavily rely upon staff to guide me on making the right decisions of what, you know, what type of needs the district has in terms of its IT products and services. So having said that, I don't believe it's appropriate for commissioners to jump in and just, you know, sort of jumping into the work of district business. I think that's highly inappropriate. And I think that if staff does need assistance from the commission, staff will ask us, you know, and come to me and say, Commissioner Bernardo, I know you have an expertise in X, Y, and Z. Can you give us your thoughts and ideas on this? I'm perfectly fine with that. But I myself, and I'm going to speak for myself, I will not jump in and start micromanaging or giving my ideas unsolicited or not, because I think that's completely inappropriate and not within the bounds of the policymaking that I am supposed to be doing or was elected to do. So I just want to put that out there. And I agree with Commissioner David that I, I think that it looks bad from, from the perspective of, you know, if we're inviting people we know to put in, you know, bids for projects, I just, I think, there's something about that that just looks bad. So I, I understand the urgency. If we have to vote on this, I, you know, I'll consider it, but it just, there's something about it that bothers me, and I can't quite put my finger on it. It just looks bad from a, from an optics perspective. It doesn't look good. So that's all I'm saying.
And I'd like to respond to that. I'm not sure where the assumption came in that I know either one of the vendors that supplies bids, because I don't know either one of the vendors that supplied bids. I've never worked with them before, ever. And Scott asked for the second bid, which is included at the back of your item, which is proposal 274, because it was given to the board at the April 1 meeting. I have never worked with Network Strategy before in my life. My company doesn't work with them. I don't know anything about them. I don't know if they're good or bad, or if they're, you know, nothing. And as far as this other vendor goes, Caspian IT Group, my company's never worked with them. I've personally never worked with them. I have zero relationship with them whatsoever. So I'm not sure if you're just buying into what you're hearing from the public, but I can assure you that I have no business relationship whatsoever with either one of these vendors. And it's my understanding that Acting General Manager Grindi requested a proposal from one of the vendors that provided it, that's Caspian. But it's also my understanding that he did not request a proposal from Network Strategy. He just used the proposal that they handed off on April 1. So I hope that clarifies things, because I don't want there to be a misconception that me personally, or my business, has ever had any business with either one of these companies, because I have not, nor has my company, Digital Fusion Media, ever done business with either one of these companies. And I'm not sure where these accusations are coming from, but I don't like the tone of it. Nobody ever asked me about my relationship with either of these companies, and it would have been nice if, if I'd been checked with before these assertions were made. So I just wanted to clear the air there. Anybody else?
Scott, you had your...
I think the confusion that maybe I can at least bring, you know, out is that on Caspian, we did not request them to come in. They showed up at our office with David, I can't remember his last name.
Oblovi.
Oblovi last week, as well as Commissioner Brennan, meeting them there. That's the only connection that I know of at that point, is that there was, that was their arrangement to meet and come to the office to look.
And to clarify, the reason I was there was because I had already been and looked at the servers in our server cabinet, and I am not an IT person. I could not open up the servers to see what we had in the cabinet. And I was very concerned because apparently what our IT consultant has invoiced us for, and apparently what we've paid for, does not match the equipment that we received. And I wanted to get additional information about that inconsistency, so that I would know exactly what we were dealing with. And the same exact thing, or, no, not the same exact thing, because this whole thing has been very complicated. But it was also discovered that at the Pillar Point Harbor Masters office, there was supposed to have been a server there that was missing in action. That server got delivered on, I think it was a Thursday night, I don't remember the exact date, within the last two weeks. And it was, it was a server that we purchased in 2012. Don't you wonder why we would buy equipment in 2012 and not receive it ever? I think as board members, we have a duty to make sure that we are receiving the equipment that we pay for. And I was looking into the situation so I would know what we were dealing with. And the reason that we're doing a forensic audit now to check into that is because of the fact that I noticed that what we paid for isn't what we, what we received. And I'm sorry if that seems like it was overstepping my authority, but I felt like it had to be done. And I care about the financial future of this district. I do not want to continue to spend money on vendors, which is exactly what was proposed at our last board meeting, to spend another $12,000 on a vendor who apparently hasn't delivered equipment that we paid for, and furthermore, sent a threatening letter to this district telling us that he was going to withhold things like passwords and connectivity. And, you know, we're hanging on by a thread here. If our server goes down right now, we have no backup whatsoever. We are going to be in a very, very difficult position. So I did what I thought was best for the district, and it may not have been done exactly to your liking, but we are a very small district here, and sometimes, you know, you got to do what you got to do. So I did the best I could. I don't know either one of these vendors. I can't vouch for them. I've never worked with them. I'm looking at the same estimates you guys are looking at with no additional information whatsoever. I happened to meet that vendor that one day because he was the only person that volunteered to come in for free and open up a server and look to see if it had the, all of the various components that we, we paid for. And guess what? It did not. So that's what I found out. Do I know the vendor? No. Was it nice of him to volunteer and do that for free? Yes. Is his bid low? Yes. That's all I know about it. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. I wasn't looking for an answer.
Mr. Grindi, you mentioned that there was a site visit from one of the, one of the proposed, from one of the proposals. Were you aware of another site visit at another, like at 504 Alejandra?
My awareness of Caspian going to, I believe, 504, I was not with them when that occurred. So I could not confirm or deny that it occurred. But I believe they went there with Commissioner Brennan, but I'm not sure.
Caspian never went to 504 with me.
Okay, I don't know.
I don't, I was not at 504 with them. The only IT vendor that I was at 504 was... The only IT vendor that I was at 504 with was the Well Connected Office.
Okay.
And Debra Glarza was there, Randy Kinghorn was there, myself and a couple other people. And I have never been to 504 with any other IT vendor at all. And obviously Caspian went to 504 to produce this bid, because there's no way they would have been able to produce this bid had they not gone there. So apparently they went above and beyond and made an effort to get there. And that's all I know. So I hope that helps clear it up.
My, my thoughts and comments on this is along the lines of what, what happened in, as a result of action taken by the Harvard Commission after a closed meeting, that it, we can refine the proposal for IT services. And in order to better reflect the need, the current needs, the updated needs of the Harvard District, which were not known before these proposals were received, that I would like to recommend that the Acting Harvard, Acting General Manager proceed with his suggestions of contacts with other agencies of trying to either partner or have recommendations for IT services based on what they're doing.
Is there any other comments or questions, discussion? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to support option two.
I'll second that. Where is option two?
Caspian.
It's right here. Got it. Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Bernardo?
No.
Commissioner David?
Aye.
Commissioner Matush?
Aye.
Commissioner Paravala?
No.
President Brennan?
I'm going to abstain.
Uh, so, the, the issue that we need to know, Commissioner Brennan, the reasons for your abstention, because there are two votes for and two votes against. No, excuse me, I withdraw my question. There's no need for, there's not a majority vote either way.
So the motion fails?
Correct.
Okay. Would anybody like to make another motion?
I would like to make a motion that we direct the Acting General Manager to, to contact other agencies that can partner, I don't know if that's the right word, partner or provide, collaborate or provide certain IT services for the 7th County Harvard District, and for him to select that, that provider and initiate a contract.
I second that.
Any other, any discussion?
May I ask a question for clarification? For the speed of the process, knowing we have a move and process coming, do I need to bring that contract back to the board at this point?
I'm sorry, but point of clarification, the, the motion said that it would allow you to make that decision.
But depending on the dollar amount, which is my concern.
Well, we know that the dollar amount here is well below $10,000, so certainly you ought to be able to get the spend for less than $10,000.
No, I'm just making sure that I'm asking for clarity here.
Perhaps it would be appropriate, given the existing policy is to include a capped amount on the General Manager's.
For, with the support of the second, I would propose that we amend the motion to say, not, an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Okay, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Bernardo?
Aye.
Commissioner David?
Aye.
Commissioner Matush?
Aye.
Commissioner Paravala?
Aye.
President Brennan?
Abstain. So now we're going back to item two, which is presentation facilities condition study for Oyster Point Marina Park and Pillar Point Harbor. And this presentation's going to be given by Acting General Manager Grundy.
Hope my voice survives this. In brief, you have the presentation, or the facility conditions survey for both Pillar Point Harbor and Oyster Point Marina Park on the website and in your packets. This facility condition survey PowerPoint is kind of a highlight of what the Harvard District survey came out with. The facility, and first off, I should state, what a facility condition survey is, is we had an engineering firm come in, Moffett Nichols in this case, last year. And what they did was they went through all the facilities, the docks, the piers, and other items of the Harvard District, from buildings to whatever we had contact with, and wrote up a survey that then gives us a priority really based on safety and other activities below that, wear, tear, leaking ropes, whatever it might be. Which I guess basically is in the summary here, but it's been in operation since the 1960s. The facility has full-time staff, and the replacement value of Pillar Point Harbor is around $32 million. The marina is now more than 50 years old, and many of the facilities are within near or beyond expected useful life. Our staff do maintain these facilities beyond that useful life as much as they can. The report will identify different things that are in good condition, excellent condition, new condition, to poor condition. At the time this was written, the fuel dock in, or I should say, the floating docks, there's a few of those that the fingers are pretty much shot, and that's a project in wait on the capital projects list at Pillar Point. The other one is the fuel dock, which is a leased property. At, the time this was written was before they did a lot of rehab to their dock. So there has been some additional work done on that by the leaseholder. So some of the information is still not up to date since that time it was written. The other docks are in fair and serviceable condition, and it'll last at least five years with increased maintenance. The one thing to mention is increased maintenance. Without that, what we're running into is cleats are pulling out during storms. You know, last year, we had a fishing boat run into one of the docks and break the spine of the dock, so that the staff had to get in there right away and rebuild that dock. It was a very touchy, touch and go spot time for that, because we had a lot of boats docked in. And it talks about what different repairs are needed. Basically, the assessment condition, as I noted before, is gathering all this information, putting it together. It includes things even from roads and sidewalks, not just the buildings. And what we really look at, and every time I've ever done a facility condition survey before even coming here, is really making sure that we're keeping our properties, our facilities in operational life and good conditions. Table two of your packet in, in the actual facility condition survey will show that there's about $2 million worth of repairs that need to be performed over the next five years for Pillar Point. Some of the major components include replacement of the fuel dock, providing ADA accessibility to the Harbor Master building, improving security and safety at the dock gates, improving electrical service, which we've already got into design for Johnson Pier, so we can bring 480 volt service to that pier. And, you know, we have that ready to go if something goes bad, so we can pull it out, go out to bid, or have an emergency repairs done. The assessment also addresses potential effects of sea level rise at the marinas, and the largest impact will be increased by the vulnerability of the failing slope at Pillar Point Harbor of protection. You'll find different areas, like over by the fishing pier, the riprap is starting to give way. We've had past work done before I arrived here on the bulkhead that is right near the Pillar Point office, where they've had to backfill the, underneath the sidewalk there with concrete, because it was washing out underneath. This is just a site plan of Pillar Point. This is just how the conditions are read out too, as far as new, good, fair, worn and replaced, so that they have a scoring system that makes sense consistently throughout the system. You know, the urgency, one of the biggest things I look at is safety, because if we have issues that are of unsafe nature with all the public we have, let alone our users and our tenants, we want to make sure the facilities are safe to operate. And, you know, we do regular scheduled inspections, staff do that, as well as when we have projects, we go through it as well. The cost type asset life, the cost is based in this data report, basically of the life of the, and the replacement of it. Staff sat down with the facility condition survey team for both Pillar Point and Oyster Point, and met with them, gave them all the things they knew that were bad, which is a really great way to start out, so that before they even march out into the field, they're knowing what's going wrong in the harbors. And from there, then they look for things that maybe we don't see, from, you know, flotation changes or sea level rise or other things of that nature. And then there's also scheduled maintenance. One of the most difficult things is some things are capital, some are operational repairs. So defining the two. Your operational maintenance can be things that maybe need to be fixed, like, let's say, a fence or a piece of siding on a building. That might fit more under maintenance than it would under a capital repair because of the volume or price of the item. The cost life of the project, there's useful life of everything we have. So if you build a dock, you might expect, say, as an example, 30 years of that dock that's put in. However, if it lasts longer than that, you're getting extended life, and it's used because good maintenance is being done. If it lasts less, it may be because the materials were used that were poor, or it could be higher wear by the boaters or others that are using that dock. At Pillar Point, this is just a real quick isolation of the water side assessment. There's a few exceptions, but basically many of the cleats on the fuel pier are corroded. Those have been replaced or in replacement mode right now. The anchorage is pulling up due to warping of timbers. You'll find that we have a lot of wood docks. And Oyster Point, as an example, we've moved to concrete docks in the last two years, and the life of those and the stability of those are much stronger. And when you have wood docks, they're great at the beginning, but they start to warp, they start to twist. So, yeah, depending on the quality of the workmanship is the longer the life or the less of the life. The guide piles in the piling, or the, the guide piles are your piles that hold the pile, or the docks and the fingers to stay in their condition or location they are in. No deficiencies were found, even though we do have one guide pile that was hit by a boat two years ago, and when we do our next piling replacement or adjustment, we will have to replace that one. Piled guides are the steel frame that goes around the piling, the guide goes up and down with the piling. Most of those are in pretty good condition, but a lot of them are getting older, and the rollers are about due for replacement. And the rollers are what flow up and down on the sides, and I hate to call it a roll of toilet paper, but that's how they look against the concrete side. They roll up and roll down on the concrete itself. And the frames start to get corroded from the constant motion of the tides coming and going. On the gangways, the gangways are in good condition. The walking surface, for the most part, is even and non-slip surfacing, but much of it is due pretty soon, in the next year or two, for recoding or resurfacing. What that means is the, you know, when you have a low, low tide, the gangways can get very, very steep. And so if it's a wet day, and I know we don't have much rain here, but when it does get wet or slippery, people can fall or other. ADA accessibility is, at Pillar Point, you know, most of the gangways are non-accessible with an ADA guideline, and if we have any dock replacements, we'll need to bring those up to ADA standards when we do that. What that really means is you make a longer gangway that goes about another 20 feet beyond what is there now, which will allow the angle of slope to be better for, say, someone in a wheelchair, so they can actually approach the gangway correctly at a low tide. The fishing pier is a concrete structure. It has concrete decking, beams and piles. It's in good condition. There's no significant cracks or other repairs. There is some signs, you can see when you're there, if you're taking a look at it, have epoxy injection points where the beams on the outside of the end of the pier were repaired a few years back, and there's no rust. But when you have a concrete piling, one of the things you have to watch for is when you get cracks and you're dealing with salt water, the water intrudes into the rebar, the steel that's inside that concrete. And if you don't keep that concrete sealed, what happens is your metal inside erodes, dies, rusts away, and what happens is then a good storm that may break over. So it's really keeping the piling sealed as much as possible. A lot of times it requires that you have to put a sleeve or other type coating on the outside. What my experience has been, say, in the location, is to put a sleeve over them if you don't replace them. So it's almost like pulling a sock over the top of the piling, so water doesn't get in. And when you put the sock over the piling, you actually inject it with some epoxy as well, so it encapsulates the whole piling. The abutment to the pier was recently fit with an ADA compliant access gangway, so it is ADA. The Harbor Master Office, it's gone through a lot of remodels and construction since the late 50s and early 60s. It is not an ADA building. It has a ramp at the back of the building that does have ADA standards back when those remodels were done, but they no longer meet the criteria of an ADA standard. If we were to remodel that building today, we would have to bring it up to ADA standard to pass permitting. The other problem at that building is that the counter is not really a counter. We have little rooms, not a service counter like we have at Oyster Point. And what happens is, if someone who is ADA, let's say they come up in a wheelchair, there is no elevation for that person at a lower counter. You've probably gone into a bank or something and seen a lower counter for someone who is either wheelchair or handicap of some level, who has to be able to come up and obtain services. The other problem is that front office is really badly designed for weekends. If you've been at the office and you've seen how things go, you may have 10 people all trying to cram into this little space, trying to get information from the, the office. And it's just very crowded, and then its stairways, not a ramp on the front as well. There's some suggestions on that, which I just mentioned, as far as the ramps and such for ADA and accessibility. There is some suggestions for deferred maintenance. One of the things that's going to be discussed later on this year for budget is the, replace the restroom at the boat ramp. That was a temporary type portable building that was put in place, John, remind me how many, it was a couple decades ago, as I recall, and it's rotting away. And that serves a lot of the public, both at the beaches and at the boat ramp. What I am hoping to propose in that is a precast concrete building that is, where we would take the building that's there down, put a precast in place, where they're, they're made in sections like a loaf of bread. They bring in the precast building and set it in place, and basically the general construction can be done almost within a week to two weeks. So our downtime at the slow seasons would be the best time to replace it. There is also the standardization of floor finishes throughout the restroom buildings. They do need, in the, one of the Johnson Pier needs to be redone. And it's also some ADA compliant service counters and ramp areas. Lighting controls throughout the building need to be updated, and there's some ceiling grid issues with moisture. The maintenance building, which many of you may not even realize is there, but it's in the back of the Pillar Point area, was built as a single-floor building and now has a second floor and part of the building. There's a lot of deferred maintenance on the building from electrical conduits that are rusting away, exterior fascia and structures of this steel building, just because it is a salt environment. And there's a few other pieces there for replacing interior finishing upstairs room, and improve the heating and ventilation upstairs in the locker room. Some of that deferred can Some of that deferred can continue to be deferred, but really we have to look at the outside envelope or the outer structure of the building. If we do not maintain the outer structure of the building, everything else starts to rot and rust away. Basically, you want to keep what they refer to as the envelope of the building tight. The tenant row, where you have the Mavericks Surf Shop, the Bait Shop, the Catch Restaurant. Uh, we most recently disredid the lining of all the sewer pipes in that building, uh, of all the rows there. Uh, we have one small section to replace yet, but that will be scheduled in. The, uh, biggest suggested accessibility issues there was the update of the parking striping. They replaced the ramps, uh, on the sidewalk to make it more of a compliant design. As you recall, there has been discussions about enlarging the sidewalk and that could be done at that time. And, you know, just making sure that our thresholds to the buildings are ADA compliant as well. The west restroom was recently remodeled, uh, but there is some pathway issues that we need to start looking at for accessibility in whatever next road, road phases of repairs we do on the outside structures of the areas around the restroom.
Are you talking about the west shoreline access?
No, 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 this is, the west restroom would be the, if you're facing the water in Pillar Point's harbor office is in front of you, the restroom that we remodeled to the right.
Okay.
There's, some of the pathways coming in are still uneven asphalt and a few things of that sort. Um, deferred maintenance, uh, there is some effervescence on the outside of the building. Uh, much of that has been taken care of during the remodel, but it still continues to happen. Some of it's caused by whatever concrete mix was used for the mortars.
This is the restroom with the showers for the little boards?
Yeah, over by ABC.
Okay, we, we just did that?
We did that, but there's always more things that come up.
Okay.
Uh, the restroom is by the public pier. It's in fair condition, but it's due for remodeling about one to three years. And as I mentioned earlier, another ADA ramp type issue needs to be resolved there. Uh, the exterior doors, frames, we're, we're in a salt environment that's very heavy exposure. So the things that are steel or not fiberglass of nature, they just start to rust through. And a lot of times they start out from the inside out, so we don't see the rust till it's already way beyond controllability. Uh, the floor tiles in there are also starting to give way and we've been doing repairs, but it really needs to have probably an epoxy floor put in where they take up the tile and put a different kind of flooring down so it'll last longer. And we talked about the boat ramp here as well, just, you know, basically the easiest way to say is just knock it over and start it over. It, it's to the point where we can keep putting Band-Aids on it, but it's just not worth saving. Uh, at Pillar Point, roads, sidewalks and parking is another thing that was in the condition survey. The roads are in fair condition with some maintenance required. We've typically, three years, almost three years ago, we did a resurfacing, recoding or, um, slurry seal, depending on what you're used to for terminology, at the boat ramp area and up to about where the kayak vendor is. At the same time, you know, our other roads, it's time, they're getting alligatored. And I'll have pictures at the end of all this to kind of just explain everything. But what happens is your asphalt starts to get cracking and you get settling underneath that where the water penetrates the cracks. So then what happens, this fine sand and other dirt underneath that gravel erodes out. You start to get pit holes and chuck holes. And then what happens is that gets worse and worse as heavy trucks, and we have a lot of heavy trucks come through. And as you're aware, we had that, uh, one line collapse over by the Johnson Pier because the heavy equipment, heavy trucks driving over slowly just thinned out that asphalt and started compacting a sewer line. We want to make sure that we're keeping our substrate below the asphalt as well as the asphalt levels solid and secure. The sidewalks appear to be in good condition, however, the sidewalk at the tenant building is not ADA compliant, which I mentioned earlier. We really do need to do a resurfacing project, but just to give you a ballpark number, to resurface, let's say, all the Pillar Point parking lots where they're recoded with a black sealer and re-stripe, you're probably looking at a quarter million dollars. Utilities, the underground were not inspected in this survey, uh, just because you'd have to dig them up to find them for the most part. But we do know that, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we had the, uh, we've had some sewer line blockages, we've taken care of most of that. The sewage pump though, it serves the entire Harbor District, uh, at Pillar Point, uh, is out in the middle of the parking lot and that is due for replacement. Uh, it's been deferred maintenance for a couple, five years already. And that is one that gets rid of all the sewage for all the buildings around there because it has to lift the sewage above to get to a real sewer line. The electrical, um, the shore side facilities are adequate. Uh, the fish bar buildings, you know, Johnson Pier, they're getting aged and really that's why I brought that four eighty volt, um, project forward to get that leased designed and ready to go. Because the services that were designed were two, one twenty volt, two forty volt. That's not the common voltage you see anymore for commercial coming into a building. They usually transform down to the one twenty, two forty. So we're trying to get upgraded because a lot of the equipment that comes in, uh, it will need to have those higher voltages to work from. It's the big pumps, the squid pumps and other things. We need the capacity out there to handle it and help our tenants as well. Sorry. Landscaping at Pillar Point is minimal, obviously there's a water shortage. The ground cover has been mowed, but is, you know, pretty much what it is. There is, uh, areas that are miscellaneous with nautical themes, there's some anchors out there and a few things. We may need to start looking at how to beautify that a little differently without grass, without flowers and maybe bring just a few different changes to that aspect. So you have highlight spots instead of trying to do it all, all over the harbor. Uh, that could be with maybe, uh, some kind of rock and other treatments. But really trying to get it to where it's lower maintenance and having, you know, with the less water we're getting, we need to just work towards that instead of having dry turf. And there's just some talk about planting and some native foil, foliage that's around the, the site. But for the most part, you know, our hillside for erosion over by the maintenance shop on Capistrano Road, uh, the foliage seems to be good enough to keep the, when we do get a rainstorm, it isn't eroding too badly up there with the water coming down the hill. But with the drought that we're in, it's important to maintain that so we don't have erosion that could erode the road or the sidewalks up there. Sea level rise analysis. We talked a little bit earlier about some of the sloughing, sloughing down of the, uh, into the harbor, the rip rack falling, uh, and the soil being exposed around the bulkhead and over by the fishing pier. With the sea level rise, uh, this, as things continue to rise over the next couple decades, that's going to expose more of our, uh, concrete and substrate underneath all the bulkheads. Uh, that may require that we have to either do some new pumping of concrete into the open areas underneath the sidewalks and also do a, uh, epoxy type caulking to the seams so that water doesn't penetrate. The seawall is a major concern for me. I do watch that. I don't say that we have an emergency right now, but I can see in the next few years we may. Uh, some of the pictures here, the fish bar building at Johnson Pier, the asphalt is, there was a deck material put on this, uh, end of the pier for where the fish buyers to repair the top coat. It was an epoxy type product similar to asphalt, but different. And what it was, it was about a half inch to quarter inch epoxy type material. Uh, the benefit of that is it protects the concrete from getting wet. It's almost like a big plastic shield, keeping water from getting down into the reinforced steel. Pillar Point Harbor Office, uh, there's a lot of doors to the building, but only one with an ADA ramp. And, uh, even with that, it's still not ADA compliant to today's standards. And this tenant row, for people who are not familiar, this is part of the tenant row at the Mavericks Inn and then working to the other direction. And we talked about either sidewalk expansions, but also the ADA cuts that needs to be occurring somewhere in the next, uh, project level when we touch that area. West restroom at Pillar Point, you can see some of the white in the picture on the concrete block, that's the effervescence that was talked about. It continues to weep out of the, more where the concrete was put in for the blocks. Uh, this is the Johnson Pier Public Restroom. Uh, again, the ADA level of the ramp needs to be updated as well as some of the access points inside the building for ADA. Good example of alligatoring or worn concrete and asphalt where the water intrudes through the asphalt and then continues when we do have rainstorms, gets down in below, then if a truck drives over, pushes out the fine sands and gravels, which makes it even a deeper hole down the road. We have a lot of seal coat and or sealing to do on a lot of our asphalt roadways on both sites, just to protect our, our investment with the asphalt roads. Oyster Point Marina and Park, uh, which is where we're at today here. Uh, the seawall, it's in good condition overall, was recently replaced, I believe, less than, less than ten years ago.
Reconfigured.
Right, right, reconfigured. And it had a, uh, piling wall before that, a piling. Uh, some of the problems I'm seeing though with that one is that we are now getting the planks of concrete that are part of the seawall, they're starting to shift a bit just from normal age and settling. So water, when you have a high tide, is splashing through those areas. So it's starting to erode and we are getting on the top cap of that, uh, seawall, uh, some corrosion and breakage of the cap just from that, uh, motion of settling going on. Uh, it's not an emergency, but we need to keep an eye on it and probably have to do some kind of a major maintenance project in the next two to three years. Harbor Master Office, I'll be very honest, the building is in pretty good shape. The staff have done a really good job, but it's due for a lot of minor maintenance. Uh, the problem that I see there more than anything else is our water level. When we have king tides, right now, we are standing in a foot of water at the building. And I have pictures of that as we get further down. The, the building itself, the interior, it needs to get some ADA improvements to the service counters and the floors, uh, the floor tile and such has started to get really worn in spots. But it, it's still in usable condition. Uh, the heat exchanger HVAC system was recently replaced a few years ago.
Another thing I wanted to mention is that you've got the, um, hot water heater in the same cabinet or the same closet as, as the Comcast and...
Exactly.
So that needs to be separated at some point?
Uh, it doesn't need to be separated, but it's not a bad idea. Uh, by code, it's okay there because it's low voltage. But one of the problems in our closet on the opposite side of the, it's a conference room in the Harbor Office, um, there's a ladder to get to the attic where a lot of the surplus files and everything have been stored. And then some of the, uh, electronics for the computer systems are in that same closet as well as a hot water tank. And I believe there's a small sink in there, but, uh, no, okay, not. But the intent was though is that everything that could be crammed in there is. And it's very full. And typically you would put your IT type equipment either in a rack or something similar to a box or rack somewhere other than in a closet like that, this utility closet where things are going to get banged around.
With the mop and the button?
Mops and ladders and boxes going up and down. It's just, the, that was the choice about, I think, ten years ago when the original IT firm was here and it was probably a bad choice to continue to stay there. Uh, deferred maintenance, uh, we're getting close to replacing that roof, we're getting some leaks. The windows can be addressed concurrently, uh, either replacing the windows and or regaseting them. Uh, the exterior siding needs to be replaced, the exterior windows need to be replaced, uh, some of the side windows. Interior window sills are all starting to get water leakage, which is causing some wood damage, which will then start drawing the termites and other rubber end type issues. Uh, we talked about the floor finishes, um, some of the walls, they've been painted, but they're starting to show wear. And, uh, some of the cabinets, uh, in the multipurpose room probably should be replaced for this. The maintenance building, which is the green building actually outside our window here, uh, it's a prefab metal building. Uh, there has been some settling, as you recall, this was a, for lack of a way to put it, a garbage dump at one time. So you will find a lot of areas in the parking lots and in the roadways even where the road has literally sunk down. And I always say it's a Volkswagen Beetle that started to rust away and finally collapsed and the road sank with it. One of the things I've noticed though too is in our circle turnaround and some of the pathways, since the ferry system came, uh, we have a lot more heavy buses and heavy bus traffic on a daily basis. As you're maybe aware, we have over ten thousand riders on that ferry per month. And those heavy buses, it's time to start addressing the uses of that transportation, maybe how we fix those roads. Because, uh, the asphalt is starting to thin out with the wear of the turning of the buses. The, uh, tenant restrooms, uh, spaces are heavily, I'm sorry, in, in, I'm sorry, rewrote this one. The restrooms in the maintenance shop, they're fairly worn out, but they're still being used and it's not the prettiest sight when you go in there. The staff, uh, continue to keep them clean and it's just that the maintenance is getting to the point of where they're getting old. Deferred maintenance, exterior windows and doors are rusting away. There's large sections of the slab that need to be either pumped and jacked back up to get it level. Um, there's some vinyl flooring that should be replaced and the siding, some areas of that maintenance building, you can actually see daylight through because of the shifting and the settling of the building. On the east side, uh, those restrooms from this end down here through to the ferry terminal were recently remodeled. Restrooms four and five on the west side, we've had some remodeling by staff done, but they have not gone through a full remodel, we're just maintaining them basically. For the restroom four and five, there's definitely some updating for ADA and building a ramp just to make them ADA compliant when we do touch them the next time. You may recall about a year, almost two years ago, when we were remodeling the public restroom by the fishing pier, it turned out that our ADA improvements that were done roughly three years earlier were not meeting the criteria of the permanent, uh, inspection. So some of the sidewalks and ramps had to be redone just to meet the newest criteria when you touch it for remodel. Every time we touched something that is a major remodel, we had to take into consideration everything around that building that may require an upgrade as well, uh, just to meet ADA. And obviously in the restrooms, the deferred maintenance is the floors, the fixtures, the walls, the metal trim, you know, divider walls between the toilet stalls, uh, and exterior doors and hardware. The utilities, what's different here is we have both a sewer system and a vacuum sewer system. Uh, because of the grade and angle, everything, the sewer, if you go to, let's say, pump your boat out at the fuel dock area, it's actually pumped on a vacuum system and it goes up to the sewer line. So we have lift stations on the site. Everything is under vacuum and every once in a while Jim can attest to the fact that we get a vacuum leak and then nothing goes. So the liquid just stops, it won't go down the drain because it's got to go through the vacuum system to come up to a drain pipe, the sewer. So it's becoming more and more maintenance related. The same with the electrical, the underground systems, uh, the settling, um, some of the soils are very caustic around here from the dump times or whatever is used as the fill or top of the rubber cap that was put in. And, uh, so what Jim and his team have found is that a lot of the corrosion happens at joints or what they call burnouts, where the wiring just literally fries and dies. And they had to pull new wire in just to get the repairs done. So it's, not every day it happens, but when it happens, everybody knows it because it's usually serving a dock or a certain area where there's customers. The water systems, uh, the underground is probably due within the next five years for replacement. The above ground and the docks receive regular maintenance, but are aging as well. Roads, uh, we talked a little bit about roads already, uh, with the buses and such and the potholes and the sinking of it. The sidewalks, asphalt sidewalks appear to be in fair condition. The parking appears to be worn and many of the areas is due for, we have a couple parking lots like over here where they were never asphalted because there was future development planned and it never occurred. So what we have is parking lots that are not asphalt coated. So basically we have other erosional issues to where the soils, the sands of the soil keep eroding out and it turns into a mud bath over in that area at times when we have, we do have the rainstorms. Uh, the landscaping, we have a lot of landscaping, a lot of mowing, but because there is a, a cap over the garbage dump, what happens is your trees and such, that once they get to a certain size, they get root bound, they can't go any further deep because it stops. So the root has to spread.
How deep is the cap?
Roughly two foot on average.
That's it? And it's just, what is it, plastic or?
So they do it with clay?
Yeah.
Some areas like up more toward the bay where the riprap is and stuff, that's done with a fabric. But everything upland here is done with a clay.
It hits that and grows. And so it spreads out. And so what happens is then the roots die and a good windstorm comes in and all of a sudden the tree goes over. So we had to look at a replanting plan with shallow roots, maybe more foliage that's small shrubs than trees for the future. But we had to work with the city under the code for what kind of plants can be planted in this area.
I have a question about the roads. I've noticed here that the roads go like this, like they're sinking.
That's what I was talking about. That's where the Volkswagen collapsed in the garbage dump somewhere. My humor version of it.
It's called differential settling from landfill.
From the landfill sinking. And so how is that impacting the commuter traffic from the ferry terminal?
A lot of that is further down so it's more commuter traffic. You know, the buses come through and turn here behind this building and go down the loop and then make their loop around in this parking lot that's fairly new. But it's more of, like if you drive the, that would be the southern side of the marina, you'll see this up and down motion as things are settling. And, you know, it definitely impacts some of the boaters who are towing a trailer with a boat on. But it's also just, it's a reverse speed bump. People aren't going to go as fast as that because they're going to definitely hit bottom or lose control. Sea level rise here. This is a little bit more detailed but as I spoke earlier, some of the biggest problems of the king tide seem to be part of the problem right now. So the immediate need, you know, there's some, as we bounce discussions internally around, we've even said maybe it's time to move the harbor master office to higher ground. This is just an example of wood docks here at Oyster Point. You can see how staff are constantly maintaining them but the rust is getting apparent. You know, we're only about 65% occupied but, you know, there is wear on these docks just the same. Even though there's not a boat there, there is wear as the docks move up and down with the tides and people do pull in from tide to tide. This is a good example of king tides. And it's not even at the high point when the picture was taken. It'll look like water in a river going over at the home by the harbor master office. And if you look carefully at the bottom of the building picture here, you will see that it's touching the bottom of the building. And that's got a couple inches to go. And so what's happening is that water is just coming right up into the base of the building and the structure. And that means all the wood underneath that building is getting exposed to salt water let alone moisture.
That was grade when the building was built too. That's a skirting. So when that building was built, it's built on pilings and a pre-poured slab. So if you can see, it looks like skirting there and a little piece of trim under the windows. You can see that brown?
Yeah.
So actual grade when that building was built was there. So the peninsula has gone down three feet.
Wow.
Since that, the slab is actually hanging in air. We've had to lengthen the utilities, water sewer and electrical to maintain that. So as it drops, we continue to add to the skirting or make the skirting longer.
So that area has dropped three feet. What year do you think that was built?
Yeah, it was built in the early 80s.
Wow.
And the other point that I want to make sure people notice, but unfortunately I don't have a real good shot of it in this group of pictures. To the right, you can see the flagpole in the picture. And in that picture, that is the guest dock ramp. So as we invite guests to come to our marina, we basically say, okay, but if you can fury the water, you can get to the harbor office and come on in. So, you know, even though the dock, the dock and the ramp is all ADA, everything's sinking around it. Here's another example of the water and you can see a better picture of the picture or the building and how it affects just coming through. It's like high tide on the beach.
So the ramp was added to accommodate the sinking of the land?
No, the ramp was actually at almost a flat angle when the building was built.
Yeah.
And it's just been falling. What we do is there's, as it makes a gap, we just continue to put like a piece of plate there, a non-skid, so people can cover that gap.
I see.
There's a key under there and it's, we're still holding on the key fine.
Let's see, am I going, sorry, going the wrong way here. Here's one of the west restrooms which is behind us here. These are the ones that have not been remodeled but they've been kept in good condition but they are aging. And, you know, just from our experience, it's about 100, 150 just to remodel a restroom. Again, here's some roadway conditions and the parking lots. And take any questions. A lot of material.
So how much?
Couple million. And we're never going to get it all in one year. That's the best way to put it for both sites. It's really keeping up and attacking our deferred maintenance first and any safety issues first. That's the biggest priority.
And I just noticed we have a public comment for this item, which is Brian Rogers.
Let me step aside.
I'm sorry, is Brian Rogers number three or number two?
That is one.
We're not on the budget.
Oh, you have a budget question?
Your question's on item number three, which is the budget workshop.
It's the same presentation as what came here, no?
No, but item number two in your packet is what Scott just had up on the facilities condition surveys for both.
Well, I can work through that if you may.
I just wanted to verify.
Thank you.
Is this one? I'm saying is that my question is?
Does the board have any questions, Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you. Very briefly, I just want to thank Scott for doing a great job in providing a summary with photos and just going in depth with the condition of our entire facility. I mean, this has been very helpful for me to see and to understand sort of what the priorities are as we go into the budget portion. So I just want to thank you for taking the time to put all this together.
Thank you. And the two condition surveys for each, one for each location, the one thing that is nice compared to what was done about 10 years ago, and I can't remember the firm off the top of my head here, but that firm made it more engineering speak. This one's more public speak. So it is easier to read if people go to the website to get a better understanding. It's still got some construction and contractor speak in it but it's not as difficult to read as a engineering document, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment too that I really appreciate you putting the presentations together. I think they're really helpful. And we don't have that many members of the public here today, probably because it's, it was an earlier meeting. So I'm hoping that at some point in the future, we could have these presentations back on the coast side so people from the coast side could see them.
Sure.
Because you put a lot of work into this and I think it's really helpful. The one thing that I would suggest is down the road, because obviously these are working documents that we're going to continue to refer back to, it might help to have some cost projection, like rough cost information, just so that the board has some.
And that's in the facility condition survey.
It is.
But it really depends on what we select, project for the future.
Maybe just a few examples, like this or that, you know. And then I really liked that you included photos, so that was really helpful. If they were sprinkled in a little bit.
I'd like to do that. It was just, it's difficult to hit the target and then.
And I know you had a lot going on.
Yeah.
So I totally understand. But anyway, this was great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I want to thank Mr. Greenery very much for putting this all together. I think for me, just initial observation is that by looking at both facilities at the same time, within a span of just a short amount of time, you were able to look at the, you know, the impression that visitors get.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, we all visit Harvard for different needs and different, or different schedules, or, I'm sorry, different, to two facilities. But once you see, you put yourself through the eyes of a visitor. And I think that's what, for me, was extremely beneficial to see that.
Thank you. It is the visitor and the tenants. We want to make sure that, you know.
Yes.
We see what they see as much as we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'd like to have a five-minute quick break and then we're going to have that budget workshop.
Sure, 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 sorry.
We don't have to talk about that. I'm just saying. Bye. Go then.
Okay.
Okay, so we're back and we are on agenda item three, which is budget workshop for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Report is a draft preliminary budget. And Deborah Galarza is going to give the presentation.
I'm sorry, if I may, through the chair, just very briefly, with all due respect to Ms. Galarza, because of time, I know that we have the 6:30 regular meeting, if there's any way to just kind of give us the highlights or, if you can, to the extent that you can.
I think a lot of the capital was covered with the facilities and so that would probably cut it in half.
Not to rush you or anything.
Oh, no, 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 it's fine. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming and especially thank John and Jim for their assistance on getting pictures to me, talking about other things that they do besides the marina, just kind of going over what it is that we actually do for the public. So I wanted to thank them for that. The agenda item three has not been updated since March 18th because I was hoping to get some direction from the board on capital projects and things to include and not to include, so I didn't waste a lot of paper and just kind of update it all with everything together. So that doesn't really, that hasn't really been changed. So again, the purpose of the budget is just so that the board has the ability to establish the items that they feel are important to spend money on. And we do this every year. It's adopted by resolution and during the year, if items change, we can adjust the budget through a resolution as well to amend the budget. So this is just kind of a starting point for us. May 6th, so the next meeting, we will have to adopt a preliminary budget because we have 30 days to publish it and, I'm sorry, publish the hearing date. And then on June 17th, we have to fix and adopt the final budget by resolution. So we, we've got to get some stuff done today. What's our mission statement? I really thought about this with John and Jim and this is what's on the website. It's to assure that the public is provided with clean, safe, well-managed, financially sound and environmentally pleasant marinas. Sometimes I think when people think of marinas, they think of the boats and the docks and things of that nature. And we do a lot more than that. So does our mission statement address everything we do? And what do we do in addition to our mission statement? Who uses our facilities? We have the direct users, the harbor users, who pay fees and we render services to them. We also have our countywide residents who pay property tax, who come in and might have a picnic or, you know, walk their dog on the beach. And we also have some people called free riders. Free riders are people that are neither direct nor indirect. They are welcome to come. However, let's just say that a family gets together for a family reunion from out of state and they decide to have a picnic at Pillar Point Harbor with 50 people. All that garbage dumped into the garbage cans, we throw away. So we are having expenses that aren't tied to user fees. This is a list of everything that we have for our direct users. And I will go through this quickly. We have event fees. This is what we, this is what we provide that we don't get revenue for. So you can tell that, what money do we get? We have operating revenues that are only 33% of all the revenues we receive. Almost 50% of it is property tax. And 16% of that we're drawing on reserves to cover the rest. So I took this from the financial statements through 2003 through 2014. And if you look, the top line, and this is hard to see, is property tax. And you can see that that's increasing the most. It's gone from 2.5 million in 2003 up to almost 4.8 million. Following that, the green line is our operating revenue, which does remain somewhat constant and that we can address. EREF is something that we have now but it's not guaranteed in the future. But for the last couple of years, it's been close to 800 to $950,000. When that goes away, that's going to be a hard number to recover. And this is what we use it on. So real quick.
Could you go back to that last slide?
So I worked with John and we talked about what are the facilities, who uses these facilities? The harbor of refuge is protected by the inner and outer break wall and breakwater. And these are anchors out. They have an anchor, they don't pay any fees, are available to use our pump-out systems, our restrooms and things like that. That is something we have through our harbors and nav code. We have been certified for the clean marina certification. That's not required but it's optional and I think it's a great thing to have. And I talked to Gary Stern who just got the proclamation and he was telling me, you know, it's not just the clean marina, it's getting rid of batteries and hazardous waste and being trained to deal with things like that. So this is a fun one. We have an annual sand caps event in the inner harbor beach and we have salmon breeding. This is what I think is a problem. Trash that comes from people that don't use our services. We don't, for crop season, we don't charge people. We charge a deposit but we give it back. And sometimes we're left with these pallets or hazardous waste. Trash at Pillar Point is really expensive. It's about $3,500 every time they dump something. It's an average of $15,000 a month. It's a big number compared to Pillar Point, I mean to Oyster Point, which is about $2,500 a month. So we really have a huge trash problem here at Pillar Point. This is just general maintenance, like Scott said, the trucks and the asphalt. One thing also for the public places, the restrooms are used by the general public and some are private. But just for Pillar Point, they have five portable toilets and it's listed there at a cost of $15,600 a year. And that's for public users. We would not charge that to our berthers to cover those fees. They are not the users of these. These are people that come and walk the trails. Vessel abatement is very important. We have a grant this year for, I think, $143,000. We're working real actively to clean up the harbors and make them safer, so that's good. This is fun. We have boat lighting contests. This is our, tenants participating, however, it's open to the public. So a lot of times this requires a lot of overtime because what we have is the public walking our docks. So we have our patrolmen standing at the docks to make sure kids don't fall in or they guide them to the boats or hold flashlights or things like that. And OPM, I think, did their first one this year. They had a kite festival. And these are some public events that we do. Who does the vessel safety check, John?
Coast Guard Auxiliary.
Yeah, so, and then there was a cook-off. And we don't charge for that.
No.
We don't charge for the junior lifeguard training. That's a service we provide. As well as field trips. This is John having a field trip. He's showing the red flag, which is a gale warning flag for high winds. And so when that flag is flying, the kids that now go to the Pillar Point can say, I know what that is for. I know it's for high winds. So he brings them to the boat. We also provide, pump-out services are free to all users, whether you are staying with us or not, anchored out on a mooring, passing through, everybody has the ability to dump their pump-out. So, and we provide search and rescue. This is a really important function that we provide. It saves lives, it costs a lot of money, but what's the value of a life? I mean, that has to be considered when you're talking about search and rescue. Oyster Point Marina, we'll go through all of it quick. They had their Easter egg hunt. They also have public restrooms. Those are ADA compliant and they have. Those are ADA compliant, and they had recent upgrades two years ago, so they look really nice. They also have a pump-out station. And I just watched, someone used the boat wash, $1.25 for five minutes of water. That's cheap. We have a fishing pier, Vista, swimming. So, what are our opportunities here at the district? The good thing is, we're paying down our debt. We have money in the bank. Our termination benefit is not endless. There's actually a time when it ends. We have upcoming union negotiations. Could we charge users' fees for services? Could we charge for pump-outs? That's something that we're going to talk about on rates and fees with an environmental fee, that we'll figure out if that's worth to charge to people. Accelerated receivables. What we're trying to do, and that's been another, well, Rocky and I were working on in John, is we have tenants that have been here a long time that don't pay. So, what we're doing is, we're addressing it, and we're saying, you know, "Get out or pay." And they've, you know, some of them have, you know, gotten out, some said, "Look, I can't pay." They walk away. But what that does is open a slit for someone that is going to pay. And that's what we want to see. We want people that want to come and want to stay and pay their bill. Sale of surplus land. We've sold our last piece of land. The new building on Alhambur we were going to buy, but that fell by the wayside. And we've had a lot of retirements, and that's been a salary savings. Grants, we have an opportunity to do that. We had someone temporarily working on that, and once that person left, kind of grants went to the wayside, but it is free money. Move for rent savings, it sounds like we got a savings. $7,000 a month versus $7,350, and it was going to go up. So, that's great.
I think it was $8,150 or something like that?
For?
For the lease?
For Alhambur?
For the Oyster Point lease.
Oh, oh, yeah. I was just saying what we have right now. So, that's great. And just the other thing about that, I did see the property with Sabrina, and I can tell you, after 10 years of not a window opening or a door opening, it's going to be great to crack a window. I think that's really nice. I think we have the opportunity, with all the capital that we have on the hopper, to create a five-year capital plan. That's something the district's never done. A lot of agencies do that. It helps you plan, smooth out your expenditures, and I really think that gives you more control on your dollars that you're spending. This is just our debt. These are our challenges. We kind of talked about that already. Capital projects, I'll just go through it real quick. This is what's on the budget right now. Just $3.6 million is a lot to spend in one year. And whether or not we can tackle all that and get it all done, that remains to be seen. But more importantly, that's a lot of money to spend, and I would like to see us maybe address what we really need to do. When I think of capital projects, I always ask myself, is it revenue-producing? The sidewalk would probably produce revenue and more rents, percentage rents paid, things like that. Health and safety, that has to be thought of, just like Scott said, any litigation. So, I will go through these, because I think Scott had a lot of these slides in his presentation. But these are the items. I think this one's really important. I think the Board should really talk about whether they want to replace or repair this. This almost looks hazardous to me. So, I would like to get some response on that. He had a picture of the Romeo Pier, we've talked about last year, and it got pulled from the budget, but it really looks like it's time to address that. There's some other pictures you've seen already. Oh, back to this. So, with the $3.6 million, how do we pay for them? Do we go back into reserves again? Or should we solicit financing? That requires DBA approval. Or do we refinance DBA and add some other money and create a new loan? Money's cheap right now. I mean, so, and then we don't have to have everything that we do be reviewed by DBA, because right now, anything over $1 million has to be approved by them. Any other kind of large expense has to go to them. Any lease that we want to have with a new tenant, so that's something to consider. We have about $14 million right now. If we go to reserves and spend the $3.6 million, plus our principal and payment on our debt, it's going to bring us down to about $11 million. So, it is something to consider. You can see all the peaks and flows, and a lot of times, if you look at our investment in capital, those peaks going up will show that we're spending more on capital. We talked about this, aging facilities, benefit expense, and we don't have enough revenues and taxes to cover all services provided. Well, how did we do this last year? Last year, we reduced capital expenditures. This is a slide from last year, and I can say that we hardly, I don't even think we spent $250,000 on capital this year. It kind of died. We had all these ideas, but there was nobody really to take ownership of it and make it happen. So, that's something to think about. The new two-tiered system in place for new employees was negotiated in our last contract, and that has a lot of cost savings. The termination benefit is not available for them at all, and there's lower PTO and vacation accruals and things like that. Proposed parking, we keep talking about, but that seems to always fall off the marker. The district moved to its own building. That didn't happen, but we're moving anyways for cost savings. We have new leases to negotiate. Applying for more grants would be great. And I think with the strategic plan, we're hoping to find new revenue sources. This is just a picture of our unleased property right now. It fell into bankruptcy and is available, and there is interest in this property. So, to finish, how does all that pan out? You have your revenue, you have your expenses, and what's left over? And you can see with our net assets, it's everything you own minus everything you owe, and that's what's left over. You can see that net assets have increased from, I took this from the financials from '05 to '14. And in '15 and '16, it's just kind of stabilizing a little bit. But overall, we have invested, the dark blue is our investments in capital, which you can see is increasing, and the light blue is our cash and unrestricted net assets. So, that's it.
Okay, and for the public's information, could you clarify that this will be available on the website?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, if you go to the meeting section of the website, under Board packets, there'll be a link that takes you directly to this presentation, and I believe Scott Grindi's presentation...
I think his is already online.
Yeah, it's already part of the board packet, and it did pair up nicely with this So, do we have, oh, we have a public comment?
Oh. First, are there any questions?
We, I know I have questions, but we need to take the public comment first.
Oh, okay.
We only have one public comment, and that's Brian Rogers.
You know, actually, what I have to say has to do with both of these items, because essentially, I'm a big fan of the capital projects. I'd like to see them done. My only concern is, it doesn't really show in this how it's going to get paid for. I mean, basically, if I'm reading this correctly from the budget summary, we're spending everything we bring in right now.
Right, that's what we pay.
So, what happened, and I'm just, there was nothing in the packet that I could find that said, "How are we going to, how are we going to spend, or how are we going to find $3.6 million?"
Okay.
And then, another thing, while I was listening to what Scott had to say, is I know we approved the dock fingers a year ago, and then pulled it off, and basically, if I understand correctly, we're waiting for permitting. But then, in what was discussed today, was that the ramps are then going to be, need to be brought into ADA compliancy if we start replacing those figures. So, is that part of the 580?
No, that's a repair, replacement.
And do we then also have to do the ADA compliance on the ramps? Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I was just, that came up, and I read it out, and I went, "Oh, my God, that's going to raise the price of that one by a lot." So, yeah, all I wanted to say mostly was that, yes, I'm a huge fan of getting all of these things done. Getting them all done in one year seems like a miracle. I don't believe that's going to happen, but I still don't see anything that says how we're going to pay for it. So...
So, I was wrong. We actually have two speaker slips. The second one is John Ullman.
Now, you have four short suites. $3.6 million more you have to spend than you've got money for. That's why it's been here for a long time. And you can catch that from the facilities update we're giving. There's a lot that's been put off. And the best that the district has offered to address this issue in the last few budget cycles is with off-capital expenditures, because that's the only thing you can put off. And Ms. Galarza's correct, you have a chunk of money in the bank, but a lot of that money's committed. I think well over $3.5 million now is committed to your employees for termination benefits. That, I think, was $14 million we saw up there. DBW gets some of that, but they get, that comes out in 2018 or so, maybe '19. You have a couple other things. It used to be called restricted assets, but that changed. What used to be called restricted assets now are reserve funds. So, you do not have $14 million to spend in the bank. You have quite a bit less than that. The trend is, is that if you don't do something, you're going to be broke. You're going to have no money in about three years, maybe two. You know, unless you keep putting off capital expenditures and don't fix anything, and Romeo Pier doesn't fall down, and nothing goes wrong, you might make it. Even if you get to your DBW loan, I don't get that wrong, even if you get that loan paid off, that still would equate about half of your current deficit. So, that will put some money in your pockets, but you still have a big deficit. There is no, seems to be no awareness of this. A couple of you guys or gals are business people, you know what you would be doing at this point. You'd be looking really hard at your operations. You'd be looking where you're making money, where you're losing money. Ms. Galarza's correct that you spend a lot of money doing things for, I guess, what you call free riders, but you do get $5 million from the taxpayers to do those things. So, it's not like you're taking those things, that money for that stuff, out of operating revenue. You don't even have enough operating revenue to cover your operating expenses without taxpayers. So, unless you make some hard decisions, like you have, you know, this is why we worked hard to get two new council board members in here, because no one seemed to understand the trend. This year, for some reason, there is not the graphs that were in there last year. Last year's budget presentation was spectacular, made it very clear what were the problems. You shouldn't be talking about $70,000 here, $3,000 here. You ought to be talking multi-hundred-thousand-dollar cuts to stuff. You ought to be talking about splitting up and not doing South San Francisco anymore. Hey. Good luck.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments, while Ms. Galarza's here?
I have a couple of questions, and, you know, part of it is that this is my first budget workshop that I'm participating in as a commissioner. Do we have written financial policies that the Board reviews? Like policies on, you know, reserve policies, investment policies, or...
There are policies. There's an investment policy, there's purchasing policies. There is not a reserve policy.
But there are some that you could provide the Board?
Yeah, I think, doesn't the Board get all the policies and procedures once they sign up? Because if not, I can, I have them all PDFed, I can send them to your email. That's no problem.
Okay. Because what I'm trying to understand is, how do we, how do we establish goals and long-term goals and priorities for the Harbor District? And, you know, like a funding strategy and a multi-year capital improvement plan, because we cannot, you know, let these things slide any longer. Like, how do we, how do we, I think we cannot really get to all of this today, but how do we prioritize this long-term? How does, how...
Well, I think one of the items is to come up with a five-year plan and smooth it out. I mean, I agree, $3.6 million is a huge hit, and you just, when I first started in 2005, we had a million and a half in capital projects. We just split between Pillar Point and Oyster Point. So, basically, things were just kind of kept along. But I think, like, I think Jim said, that some of these docks have outlived their lifetime. So, it's kind of come to the point where these small patches and these little items we used to do to kind of keep things going aren't sufficient anymore.
Yeah.
So, I do agree, it is, I mean, how do you take care of this? But, you know, you have to, you have to break it down and plan what you want to do. I don't like $3.6 million in capital. I, you know, I put it together because that's what people said we needed to do, but I think that that's just not prudent.
Other questions?
Ms. Galarza, in terms of, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I really like how you put price tags on sort of each item, so it gives me a better sense of how much these things really cost. Now, my question is with regards to sort of big-ticket items. How do our legal fees play into all of this, from what you're seeing?
Well, legal fees have gone up quite a bit. As far as big-ticket items, I think it depends on permitting problems, things of that nature. I don't think legal would necessarily get involved in our capital projects unless there were problems. And the only problems I could see would be permitting, or, you know, fines, or things like that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, it seems like with everything you kind of grazed over in the...
I was asked to.
I know. We have limited time, we're already, and I apologize to the public, we're behind schedule. We're still on a special meeting. The regular meeting hasn't even started yet. So, we're going as fast as we can here, but, and I know we had to graze through stuff, but I did also, I did notice that some of the graphs and detailed information that's been included in past budget workshop presentations, which, by the way, I have all of them that I could find posted on my website, so I'm familiar with what's in them. What wasn't included in this presentation, and I'm wondering if there could be more information included in our, maybe a revision of this presentation, and I'm hoping that we could bring this workshop to the coast side, so that more public members would be able to participate. And it would give the Board more of an opportunity to digest the information that we just heard, because I want to just make sure everybody here realizes, this is the first time the Board has ever seen this presentation. It wasn't included in our board packet. It's all new information for us, because it's been in development till today. And so, if we have another couple of weeks to digest this information, I have a feeling that there'll be a lot more questions and interest in thinking through ways that we might try to bring down our deficit and rethink some of the capital projects that we need to prioritize, and also consider, you know, in general, what our priorities are as a Board. I mean, there's just, there's a lot here, and you know that. And we need time to think it through.
And staff is really looking for a board direction.
And, you know, a five-year plan was just mentioned.
Yeah.
And I think we've gotten into a little bit more future planning in some of the past budget workshops. So, I think this would also give us an opportunity to have some discussion about a five-year plan and some budget projections and things like that going forward at a future meeting. And maybe that's an afternoon meeting or something, and we won't have as many meetings stacked up in one day, so it will be a little bit more manageable. But these are some of my thoughts.
Okay.
With regards to reserves, I think that the fact that we don't have a reserve policy is, I mean, that's come up before lots of times.
Right. You're not required to have one, but we should.
We should, you know, we should start to think... We should, you know, we should start to think about?
You know, a lot of agencies do three months operating, or a percentage of reserves, or things like that. That's, that's not a bad idea. That's a good.
I have no idea how long it would take to get a draft of a reserve policy together, so I don't know realistically if that could be done, you know, in a couple of weeks, or if it would take a couple of months.
Probably months, because we gotta pack up boxes.
So I think going forward, that's something that, you know, I definitely am interested in.
Okay.
And then, as far as the investment policies and various policies that we have in our policy ring binders, what might be helpful is when we have the budget workshop to, and maybe the next variation of one, to have those policies pulled out and included in the packet. That way, the commissioners have them right in front of their faces, and we can read up on the policies that are relevant to finance in conjunction with the workshop. So that's just a thought.
I'm just thinking, you know, for, I'm just not a big paper person, and if I PDF the file to you, you could search investment, and all the investment policy would come up. You could search the word "reserve," all that would come up, and you can digest that, you know.
So you want to create a PDF of the policy?
I have one. That's the only thing I use.
That would be good, and then maybe we could also put that PDF link, or a link to that PDF with the board packet on the website. That way, the public can see it, the board can see it, and we can all refresh our memories instead of trying to find the ring binder, and the public doesn't have the ring binder. So that would be helpful, I think.
Okay.
And then as far as, like, other investment possibilities, you know, you've talked about the Department of Boating and Waterways, and I totally get what you're saying about how anytime we want to do a project, we have to go through a lot of rigmarole, because we have to get, we have to get approval from them before we can do anything, because we still owe them money.
Right.
And, you know, whether or not there are better ways to, or better places for our debt.
That's what I'm wondering.
I mean, I think that's something that we really, I don't know when the last time the district looked at that, but.
Um, yeah. I want to say they, was it 2008, maybe? They consolidated. So I think something, I would have to look at the time, but I know it wasn't forever long ago. It's been the time since I'm here, but I agree with you that there might be better places to park our debt.
So that's something that, you know, we might, we might want to look at.
I agree.
And so I'd be interested in learning more, and I know that's not going to happen overnight either. But it's definitely something that I want to learn, you know, more about what our options are.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And then, I had a couple of specific questions, which I've written down, and now, let me see what they were. So on budget summary, page eight, I think, I think this is the same budget as last time, right?
It never changed, it's the same one.
Okay, so budget summary of page eight. Would it be possible to fill in the numbers on the total revenues less expenses line for Pillar Point Harbor and Oyster Point Marina?
Oh!
So I noticed those weren't there, and I just wondered if we could fill those in?
Yeah.
Okay. And, let's see. And then, under capital projects?
What page?
Oh, same, well, wait, is it this? Yeah, on the same page. The total for capital projects, so that's page eight of 39. You've got 300, sorry, yeah, the number is, is the same number as our deficit. Explain why the capital projects number is exactly the same as our deficit.
Because, like Mr. Olin pointed out, we've spent everything we've earned, and the only thing left to pay is capital, and we don't have money left over for that, so that would be the deficit.
So every single capital project, and that includes repairs too? What does it?
No, it doesn't include repairs.
It includes any improvement-type project?
Anything that qualifies as a capital project.
And so that explains that.
And like I said, that would be great to hear from the board about what maybe we could put on hold, but.
Yeah, and I think we should look at the capital project list while we're here, if we have time. And then, where you've got?
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
Page eight still.
Oh, still page eight.
Total revenues less expenses for Pillar Point Harbor and Oyster Point. I guess what I'm trying to explain is deficit, like expense revenue, and deficit as percent of revenue, or total expense as a percent of total revenue. Is there a way we could try to clarify that sort of thing? Does that make any sense?
No, but whatever you're reading from, you can make me a copy.
Yeah, I'll mail it to you. So in essence, I'm asking for revenue less expenses for Pillar Point Harbor and Oyster Point Marina. Maybe I'm just not seeing that. Maybe that's on another page. But I see here on page 10 of 39, we've got, you know, again, it shows the total revenues of 9,333,000 dollars, essentially. And then we've got on page eight, our total costs of almost 13 million. So it makes sense that our deficit is about 3.6 million. But I guess if that $9 million figure was on the page eight, it would make more sense? If that, is that?
Oh, well, what's, what's happening is on, let's see, page five, it summarizes all the revenue. So that's your 9 million broken down by department.
Okay.
And then everything else is an expense.
Okay.
So, yeah, maybe, you know, you give me a call and we could play with how you want it to look, but.
Okay. All right. And then, with regard to our costs for benefits, for health benefits, and I mentioned this earlier, it's, it's been brought to my attention that the Affordable Care Act is, there's a, there's a?
40% excise tax, I'm aware of that. So it happens in 2018. The threshold is 27,500. If you exceed that threshold, you would pay 40% of whatever you exceeded it by. So currently, if it were today, and the 27,500 threshold were upon us, the total cost of our highest benefit is 26,832, so it would have no effect. That will probably change in 2018, as costs go up. So in other words, if, let's just say for easy math, the threshold is 27,500, and your benefit you paid on behalf of your employee was 28,500, you would pay 40% of $1,000 in taxes.
And so, would it be possible for you to put together a graph or some kind of a spreadsheet that shows the board what the costs would look like in 2018, so we can see what kind of impact that?
I would like to wait till the union negotiations are done, because costs of benefits are talked about, and that's an item that's coming up June of 2015. That will change everything, so if I do a graph in, say, April, and it changes in June, you know, I would rather have the current information to do a forecast.
Okay, but it would significantly impact our?
Oh, yeah, our cost, yes, definitely.
Okay, so you want to wait till after June?
But that, but that also can be part of the union negotiation as well. The employer can say, hey, in 2018, we're gonna have to pay this tax, and that can also be a negotiating point for the employer with the employee. Do you understand what I'm saying? So that might change things as well.
Okay. So are there any other, like, because that, I had not heard about the Cadillac tax until only two weeks ago. I don't know how I missed the news on that one.
Well, the federal government changes things daily.
So are there any other, like, unforeseen or unexpected costs like that coming up?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I knew about that, but as far as the budget, it was for this fiscal year, so I didn't bring it up.
Okay. All right, I just wondered. So I guess that wraps up my questions, but I know I have a lot of other questions.
That's fine.
And we're kind of limited on time here, and I'm hoping that we can bring this sort of workshop back to the coast side, and at that point, you know, maybe you've added a couple of things to your presentation, and we've all had more time to think about it and write down our questions, and we can have a more in-depth conversation at that point.
Yeah. I just think one thing we have to recognize is, is that in May 6, we have to adopt a preliminary budget. So all that's not going to happen before May 6.
Just, well, on that note, does anybody here want to talk about some of the capital projects that are included in this budget? Does any commissioner have any? Because we haven't even mentioned what those are, except what's been presented in the presentation. Does anybody here want to talk about what's included in the budget?
No one. I have just one thing that came to my mind, is when I, when I looked at it, that I think Scott said in his presentation that the fuel dock at Pillar Point Harbor should be replaced, and I didn't see that on the list. And I don't want to, like, add endlessly, but I think we just have to, we make decisions, we have to have everything in there that is, that is essential for repairs or replacement. And the other thing is for Oyster Point Marina, the, I think it was the electrical, the utility, underground utility line?
Oh, that's on there, Johnson Pier Electrical?
No, for Oyster Point, the one that is failing.
Oyster Point, oh.
That falls more under maintenance than it does under, just because when it happens, it's not the full site, it's a section of the town.
It doesn't have to be completely replaced, okay.
Which page is Oyster Point capital projects on? Do you guys?
Well, you can find all the capital projects are on one page.
28.
28.
27.
There's only three capital projects for Oyster Point.
27.
27.
Okay. I just want to make a note, just so I remember. So we've got, 27 I have.
No, it's page 35.
35.
There you go.
So, so what I just heard, I just want to make a note here, is the fuel dock, is that what you just mentioned?
For Pillar Point?
The fuel dock may not fall into this coming year, but it should happen within the next three, probably is the best guess.
Because I thought the recommendation was to do it within a year, because it's?
Within a year or so, but they just did some refurbishment to it, so.
Would that be something that the district would pay for?
I believe that they pay for it as a tenant.
Yeah, I thought that was on the tenant contract.
Yeah, the tenant contract part of their maintenance.
Does the contract specify when they have to replace it?
No. It just says, you know, maintenance, general maintenance and upkeep.
When is the contract up?
Oh, my goodness, I'd have to check, but it's got another, what, 10 years?
10, 12 years.
So they wouldn't have to replace it for 10 to 12 years until the contract is up?
Well, it depends on the safety level of it. That's why they refurbished it this year.
Okay. And then the other item was something about electrical?
Yeah, like Scott said, that falls more under maintenance, because it's not the whole area for replacement.
So I know that in the grand jury report, there was discussion about the West Shoreline Trail, about how the district hasn't been maintaining that trail. What's the status of?
The project is still waiting for permit, and Coastal Commission is still holding back on the design approval.
Have they asked for design changes?
Yes.
Could you, could you update the board soon on exactly what they've asked for? We really need to be in there.
Great.
Because we can't move it forward if we don't know what's going on, you know? Where is that on here? Where's that listed?
It's underestimated carryover, the West Trail. See the 355, 93, it's the middle column, last number.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay. Yeah. And then with Romeo Pier, you know, I think we've got a safety hazard issue. So where do you see that fitting in, Scott?
Well, it's really board direction if we were to take it down. We had the estimate and design done, and for the demo, I think it's just waiting for coming up with this capital plan to remove it unless it gets worse.
So if the board leaves it in the budget, does that mean we're going to start doing?
Then we'd have to go through the permitting for demo, yeah.
So we haven't done permitting yet? We need to do permitting?
And that could take short-term or long-term, depending on how it comes out. We'd have to do a consultant selection and a bunch of other ones. It's probably a six-month, if it's not emergency.
Okay. And then I have a question for the harbor, well, for the harbor patrol, but since we have the harbor masters here representing them, I want to ask the question of you guys. What's the story with the radon boat? Replacement or repair? What do you recommend?
What do I recommend is replacement. Boat was built in 1972. It's pretty worn out. The hull has a lot of stress cracks in the fiberglass. The tow bit needs to be replaced, that means taking the whole deck off. If we do that, then, you know, it's several months out of the water. It's, it's lived a great life, and it's been a great boat, but it's time to replace it.
Okay. And we only have two boats?
Yes, ma'am.
So if one boat is not working, then we're down to one boat. If one boat's out, then we don't have a second boat. So how, would you define this as an emergency, or as a public safety issue, or how would you describe it?
Well, we're doing the best we can to keep it in service, and we've been spending a lot of money on it. You know, every year, we spend more and more, because it just takes, you know, everything wears out so fast on those boats. Is, yeah, it's a safety issue, for sure. You know, if we get more than one case at the same time, we gotta respond with, which one do you respond to? You know, so we have the two boats, and we can go with two. If one's broken down or is out for maintenance, and we have a backup, we don't have to, you know, worry about, you know, leaving people stranded out there, or the Coast Guard having to come from San Francisco to rescue them.
Okay. And what, just remind me, what is the Coast Guard's response time usually?
Depending on the weather, an hour would be quick.
Okay.
If it's a nice day. If it's not a nice day, it's going to take them quite a bit longer.
So Sabrina, you think it's safe for me to put in 350,000, then, to replace it? Is that what the board wants?
And there could be grants, too, that we could try to get through DBA and maybe some, I don't know, if we qualify for Homeland Security grant or not.
How does the board feel about this? Any comments?
350 is low to replace a vessel.
It's low.
It's low.
I think for the last one, we were close to 400.
With the electronics and everything. After we put the electronics and the life-saving gear on it, you know, the life rafts, the everything else we keep on the boats, all the medical emergencies, supplies, yeah, but the hull is about that much, about 350, I think.
Yeah, you gave me 350.
Yeah.
Can I, on this discussion through the chair? With all due respect, I'm hearing 400 on the boat, and I'm all supportive of the boat, because it's a life-safety priority, but that's almost the entire price of the Oyster Point Marina capital improvement project, so I'm just wondering, you know, I'm just wondering, is it just because there's more needs? There's a lot more needs at Pillar Point? Because I'm looking at the 2 million price tag for all of the projects at Pillar Point, and then the 565,000 dollars at Oyster Point. I mean, is that, that's really what it is, right?
I know with Oyster Point, we did a lot of refurbishment over the last two years, with a lot of the restrooms, and a lot of items got fixed at Oyster Point.
Okay. I just, I just want to put that out there, just because?
No, I'm, yeah.
I'm looking at the numbers here, and it's like, okay, 565,000 dollars, and then 2,600, so.
And if it, you know, if you guys want to do a field trip, I'm more than welcome to take you and show you every one of these, what's wrong with these, and why they need to be fixed. And, you know, photos are great, but you really can't see the damage in the photos.
I love field trips. I think it would be great to have a field trip, and then have the budget workshop after the field trip. And I wish I had more time today to go look around here, so I, you know, yeah, I think a field trip in both locations would be really helpful. We did have one field trip recently, but it was limited to Johnson Pier, and there's a lot more that we need to get familiar with, because, you're right, when you see words on paper or pictures, it just doesn't, it doesn't really tell you enough. So I think that, you know, I would like to get into that level of detail myself, in order to feel really informed, like? order to feel really informed, like, we could start to prioritize projects in a meaningful way, and then we've got to figure out where the money's going to come from, especially given the fact that we're running a deficit right now. And, yeah, I just, I feel like I need more information. Did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Bernardo's comment. I think the Romeo Pier is a big ticket item for Pillar Point, but I think it's also, it's an emergency, it's a huge safety issue for the harbor. And I'm kind of getting very worried when I hear Scott say that the permitting process could take six months or longer, because that, almost it's mid-April now, that brings us really close to the next winter and the next set of storms. I was holding my breath already every storm during the last wet season, so I was wondering if, if we can just give Scott some direction to start the permitting process, so we, we can get that accomplished over the summer and, and not increase our risk with more storms.
So Scott, seems like the board has already given you direction to start the process, because we...
Well, we did a design for the demo. We did not go any further with that, but we could amend that contract, bring it back to the board for getting the permits approved, which is a huge piece in getting ready to go to bid.
So you've got enough input from the Coastal Commission now that you know what you need to do?
Not on that specific pier demo, no.
Okay.
The design was purely how to remove it from.
Okay.
So in other words, you know, you had to hire a contractor to come in and do the demolition. And it's how do they do it so that it's not a hazard while they're doing it, it doesn't pollute the water? There's a lot of over the water issues with that Romeo Pier, because there's a lot of buildings and stuff on those, in those buildings that is not clean.
Would it be possible to, as time permits, bring back to the board two things regarding the grand jury's concerns about public safety at West Shoreline, as well as Romeo Pier?
Yeah.
It sounds like both of them are sort of stuck in process right now, and you haven't gotten a lot of direction lately from the board on keeping it moving. But that way, we could get an update on where we're at in the process, what the permitting process needs to look like, the approval process for the Coastal Commission, what changes they've asked for, if any, and we just kind of get updated, and then the board could have an opportunity to make any decisions needed to keep it moving forward. Does that sound reasonable? Okay.
You know, I think it might be time to rethink the use of the Green Pier, Romeo Pier. Yeah, that, that area was, was used very frequently, and it was a tremendous asset to the harbor. And because of the, I think, the ongoing safety concerns of the pier, that it was time to pull the existing business away from the pier. And as I look out in this room, I, I can see a lot of people that could be using that area if that Green Pier, that Romeo Pier, was revitalized in some way or fortune, fashion. And it's, you know, having waterfront property is a premium, and we do own that, that pier. Unfortunately, we don't own the easement to that pier, which has always been an issue. But if we were to rethink, instead of demolishing the pier, and think of it as a vital red source of revenue, as a vital source of tenants, as a vital source of perhaps education, perhaps as, as a marine safety center, as a, as a research laboratory, there could be a lot of tenants that would like to sort of shop in that, in that area. And I'm wondering, what would be the best way to attract ideas, future tenants, into sharing with us a potential spot of, of activity, of, of a need? We all know that that pier was constructed for the use as a fish offloading area, and because of the surge that occurs, area was no longer viable area, and then a lot of people came and started using Johnson Pier. So I'm just wondering if the board would be willing to look at ways to attract future tenants, future stakeholders, users into utilizing that area? And I was hoping that, that the, the consulting firm that we had hired to do a strategic plan, this was one of their areas of, that they were going to evaluate. But seeing as that, that the program or the continuance of the strategic plan has been put on, on a delay, that it might be time for the board to look at, I'm just throwing this out as, without, looking at other words, perhaps an RFP, for someone to come in and say, here's a piece of property, here's an area, and it's, what, what, what's the best way to utilize this area? It's also an area that the County San Mateos is looking at with their Princeton Plan. It could, it uses a vital link between the existing Pillar Point Harbor and Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, between Mavericks. There's just a lot of things that perhaps we are, we are forgetting to address as we see an increased visitor and tenant use at Pillar Point Harbor. So, yeah, $650,000 is a lot of money, but once it's gone, it's gone. And trying to replace that for, as a way of offering services to tenants, and especially as commissioners, we're looking at an increased source of revenue. So somehow, we could merge all those ideas together. I think we don't, we don't have to look at a 650,000 deficit, but instead at a, as a way of providing increased services and programs that could benefit the community.
That's a great idea.
So I just want to, I just want to like spend a couple minutes here, looking at this picture of Romeo Pier. That pier needs to be completely replaced if we were going to try to salvage it, because the pilings don't connect with, with the ground in many places, as Scott has told us over and over again. I mean, we're looking at, like, we need, we would have to build a new pier here, and this thing would never meet any sort of standards, you know, current construction standards. So the cost to build a new pier, not to mention the fact that we have no access to the pier, we have no easement, there is no way to get access to the pier, because we don't own the easement, and the, the, the property owner that does own the easement is not interested in providing the district with the easement. We've owned this pier for a long time now, and there's been many different rotations of harbor commission boards since the time the pier was purchased, yet the district has never done anything to renovate the pier. So, given the fact that we've got a 3.5 million deficit, and, well, I totally agree, we need to think of ways to generate revenue, and I would love to see a, and, you know, revenue generating pier there. I just don't see how realistically we would accomplish that. Meanwhile, we have a safety hazard on our hands. Now, it could be that we worked out some sort of agreement with the Coastal Commission, which has yet, the discussions haven't even happened yet, but it could be that we worked out some kind of arrangement with them. I have no idea what they'd be willing to entertain, that maybe we could build a new pier someday down the road when we have the money to do it, or we had some partnership from some private somebody, or some, you know...
You need maintaining of credits for the pilings and the pier itself, so that at least when you pull it out, you can request through the Coastal Commission that you can put back what you took out, within a certain amount of years.
So obviously, we would want to do that, you know, to try to protect our investment as much as we could. And I, you know, I love that pier. I, I like to photograph it, just like everybody else does. It's my neighborhood, you know, that's what I look at when I go on a walk. So it's sad, like, I'm sad to see that pier go, but I also know that we have pretty incredible storms that come through occasionally, and I would hate to see all that material wash up into people's businesses and homes. And so I think, you know, we have a responsibility to protect the public from that sort of damage. So at this point, you know, seeing that there is no angel investor lurking out there that we know of that wants to, you know, build a pier, if anybody here wants to, you know, build us a new pier, please let us know ASAP. I don't, just don't see that we have very many options right now. So it's, it's a tough situation. So that's kind of how I'm seeing it. And I did want to mention, too, that the Half Moon Bay Yacht Club does have plans to put in a series of floating docks that are very close to where this pier is located, and that is going to, if they, if they move forward with the plan, and it's the yacht club's, they have a foundation, if they were to move forward with their plan, which is completely separate from the harbor district, that would provide a great place for human-powered boats to dock up, and people to launch kayaks from, and stand up paddle boarding and whatnot. And they're already doing all of that at the yacht club right next to the pier. But the, the floating dock system that they have in mind would provide a lot of great recreational access for the public, and maybe that's something that the district wants to figure out a way to be helpful with, because it would be a benefit to Pillar Point Harbor. I haven't given it any thought, but, you know, it makes me feel a little better knowing that that might happen, the pier goes away, because at least it's useful, whereas the public can't go on this pier right now. No one's been on this pier legally in, how long?
Three to five years, somewhere in there.
Three to five years.
And not longer.
Yeah, if not longer, and it's not, it's not, it's only getting worse, it's not getting better. So, anyway, we're getting on topic here, but I do, I do support moving forward with working on the process, and that includes, you know, figuring out what, what it's going to cost to remove it. I think we kind of already know, because we, we did pay Moffett Nichols to tell us...
Yeah, they have an estimate for demo.
So we've got a quote, and then you said there's some permitting that would need to happen, that we'd need to pay for?
We'd have to amend Moffett Nichols' contract, just to get the permitting, I can ask them for a price to forward the process without.
It would be great to get an update on that, and then also, you know, get a better idea of what the process with the Coastal Commission would look like to move it ahead. So I'd like to see that happen. And I think every single one of these projects is important, including Oyster Point. It's just going to be a real challenge to figure out how to prioritize things, and I'm just feeling like we really need to be looking at items that the grand jury pointed out, and items that significantly affect public safety. And I really want to get to, you know, making improvements that improve access, you know, public access to the waterfront, and, you know, improvements for our leases and all of that stuff. I'm just feeling like public safety is really crucial. So hopefully, we'll have more chance to talk about this stuff at the next opportunity. Does anybody else have anything? Yes.
Just, thank you. Really quick, so from a timeline perspective, Deborah, when do you, when is the drop dead that you need our feedback for these prioritization of projects? In order for us to get all of our...
Well, it has to be, this document has to be a final preliminary draft at the May 6 meeting.
At the meeting?
At the meeting, which we send it out the Friday before, so I would need it maybe the Wednesday before.
Okay. Thank you.
And so far, I've heard, replace the radon boat and leave everything else on, and maybe the fuel dock.
Does anybody see anything that could definitely go?
I'm just wondering about the, I don't know about the launch ramp restroom, how, I've never walked in it, is it really that bad?
One of the things I was hoping to bring forward yet this year is the design part of, because it's in our budget this year for, I think about $20,000 or something like that.
It's, it's in the budget for 250,000, as you were talking about, just replacing it. This design?
Right, the design has to be done first.
Well, could we just put the design about in?
I think we should put the design, so at least we get moving on that, so we get a permitting and design back.
How, how much should I put for design?
I'll work it out.
Okay.
So what if we did that also for, for, instead of having one fixed cost for West Trail and say Romeo Pier, it was broken out into the cost for removal versus the cost for the permitting? Or is it impossible for us to guesstimate that cost?
I didn't understand your timeline.
Does this total cost that you have for say Romeo Pier at 650, does that, is that all encompassing?
That was, I don't know, I think that was basically the cost of the demolition, of the removal of it, not the cost of any design that they were with that. I have to look back in the notes.
That was the cost of removing it, maybe three years ago. I'm just saying that...
The engine drag and the permitting part would be, you know, a small percentage of the total.
Included in there?
No, it'd be probably additional.
Additional?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe, I have to go back to that, because that was a, by the way, it's underwater.
Okay.
Can we do permitting for the sidewalk, too, instead of the whole thing, or, just so we...
Well, if we, I mean, obviously, we have to do things incrementally, and you have to do permitting before you can do the project. So if we broke out permitting in our list of projects, it might give us something, it might help us prioritize things, because then it would be biting off smaller pieces, and we know we have to get the permitting done. Obviously, you don't want to then drag feet and wait another year or whatever to start the project.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is, typically, a lot of agencies, what they do is they do a three-year plan, so it's design, or funding, design, or pre-design, so everybody agrees on what it is, then goes into design, then goes into construction. And the intent behind that is so that, the long-term is, is that you have a plan and you can stagger your construction phases, so you're doing some design here, construction at the same time on a different page.
Would it be possible to, I'm just trying to find a way to have a list here that's more meaningful? If we had a list that showed, okay, well, we need to spend 100,000 on this permitting for whatever, then we know, well, that's what we're agreeing to do this year, but we know that then, this next year, it would be time to spend the money on the actual work itself.
Or go out, you know, what a lot of companies or agencies do is they go out and they get their design done, they get their permitting done, and then close to the end of the year, they've gone out to bid, so they know how much it's going to cost before the budget season comes up. So they have an exact amount, and they say the, the construction phase starts July 1 or something of that sort.
So could there maybe be, could even be just like a little draft document or some little informal?
They're going to get working together on that.
Something to help the board understand how it would fit, how the costs would be phased? That, that would help me.
Just one more comment.
Yeah.
I got a couple items on here I could probably put off for another year, that'll come up to about 900,000.
What are they?
The flow meters for the sewer lift station, the inner...
Oh, that, you know what, that 582-57 is for the dock fingers.
Is for the what?
Dock fingers. I realized that I put the wrong thing up there.
Oh.
So, see, the dock fingers are 582-57.
So that's dock fingers.
So you have to cross out flow meters, that's going to be a change I make.
And that's another, unfortunately, that's another public safety issue.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought it was the lift station.
I'm sorry.
The inner harbor dredging and the harbor office remodel to the front steps for 270,000. We could probably put that off a year.
John, what about the Lee Seas sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean, the problem with the Lee Seas sidewalk is that Ketch Joann's and Princeton Seafood have tables out there now, and it is not ADA compliant. You can't get a wheelchair... You can't get a wheelchair across that sidewalk. So either we widen it or we tell them they have to move their tables and umbrellas.
The other thing I want to mention, and I am very concerned about the ADA because I've, I've been out there and actually, I know you have too, seen people with wheelchairs and it's just like...
One of our tenants is in a wheelchair, so he complains all the time.
There's just no room.
I don't blame him.
And people want to sit out there and it's great for the businesses to have those tables out. And we do generate fees from the extra business, so, you know, I don't want to spend the money on it either, but at the same time, you know, ADA is public safety and then we've got, actually have something that might generate some revenue, which is, seems like that is worth noting.
The other thing is someone does complain and it's a big fine for each complaint.
So fines are possible. You need to get feedback by Wednesday before the May...
Yeah, I don't have my...
April 29th.
April 29th.
That's happening. Real close there.
So how do we, how are we going to present this? How are we going to get you feedback? What do you want, individual emails or what are you looking for?
Um, we can do individual emails, we can meet for coffee, however you want to do it. I'm open to anything. Sometimes it's better if, you know, it's not a separate email from everyone because then you have to say, well, so-and-so wants this, but so-and-so wants that. It's, it's really your call.
And then it gets into, so I understand the process, then it gets into the draft budget and then we have a public meeting and then we can discuss what's included in the draft budget and make changes.
Well, here, here I'm getting to the schedule. So the problem is we have to adopt the preliminary budget on May 6th.
I think it'd be...
It's not, May 6th is not the time where we're having a discussion. You actually have to adopt it. So something has to happen before then.
I think your comments, if you can route them through me, I'll get them to Deborah. Let's work it that way. That'd be the best approach.
Okay. Is that appropriate?
To, to have this contact through the general manager, yes, the general manager of budget.
Okay, I'm just checking, just making sure. I'm checking with you because you're usually right here.
Yeah, I'm just sat here so I can see the screen, that's all.
Okay. Just checking in. So, so input by the 29th? Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Are we done? Are we all unanimously in favor of adjourned?
Motion to adjourn this meeting.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.